Thank you for being here tonight for our December 11th, 2018 school board meeting. We've just returned from executive session where we've discussed a personnel matter, student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, a contractual matter regarding architectural services, and we are now in public session. At this point, we will move on to item three, specifically inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. And one of the things that we get as board members is that every now and then a school or a community will share books with us, and I love books, as probably everybody in this room does. My favorite are children's books, so I'm sharing a short one with us this evening, if you will indulge me. It's called, "What Do You Do With An Idea?" One day, I had an idea. Where'd it come from? Why is it here? I wondered, what do you do with an idea? At first, I didn't think much of it. It seemed kind of strange and fragile. I didn't know what to do with it, so I just walked away from it. I acted as if it didn't belong to me, but it followed me. I worried what others would think about my idea. What would people say about it? I kept it to myself. I hid it away and didn't talk much about it. I tried to act like everything was the same as it was before my idea ever showed up. But there was something magical about my idea. I had to admit, I felt better and happier when it was around. It wanted food. It wanted to play. It wanted lots and lots of attention. It grew bigger, and we became friends. We became close. I showed it to other people, and even though I was afraid of what they would say, I was afraid of what they would see when they saw it, they would laugh at it, and I was afraid that they would think it was silly. And many of them did, and they said it was no good. It was a bad idea. They said I was weird, that it was a waste of my time, and that nothing would ever come of my idea. And at first, I believed them, all of them. I actually thought about giving up on my idea. I almost listened to them. But then I realized, what do they really know? And this is my idea, I thought. No one knows it like I do, and it's okay if it's different, and weird, and maybe a little crazy. I decided to protect it, to care for it, to nurture it. I worked with it. I played with it, but most of all, I gave it all of my attention. My idea began to grow, grow, and grow, and it grew, and so did my love for the idea. I built a new house for it, one with an open roof where it could look at the stars, a place where it could be safe to dream and soar to its highest heights. I liked being with my idea. It made me feel more alive, like I could do anything. It encouraged me to be big, and then to think bigger. It shared its secrets with me. It showed me how to walk on my hands, because it said, "It is good to have the ability to see things differently than other people." I couldn't imagine my life without it. Then one day, something amazing happened. My idea changed right before my very eyes. It spread its wings, took flight, and burst into the sky. I don't know how to describe it, but it went from being here to being everywhere. It wasn't just a part of me anymore. It was now a part of everything, my idea. And then I realized, what you do with an idea? You simply change the world. And as I read that this evening, I thought about a quote from Mary Ann Williamson. "Our deepest fear is not that we are inadequate. Our deepest fear is that we are powerful beyond measure. It is our light, not our darkness, that most frightens us. Your playing small does not serve the world. There is nothing enlightened about shrinking so that other people can feel more secure." We are all meant to shine, as children do. It's not just in some of us, it's in every one of us. And as we let our own light shine, we unconsciously give other people permission to do the same around us. As we are liberated from our own fear, our presence automatically liberates others. If you will rise with me, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I feel like I should comment, but it was me, so I won't make a comment. Moving right along to item 4.1, approval of our current agenda. We could get a motion, please.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the agenda for December 11th, 2018 board meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. It's been moved and properly seconded. At this time, we'll vote. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. At this time, we'll move on to item 5.1, special recognitions. Mrs. Ruth.
Before we begin the presentation certificates, we have a Boy Scout troop with us. And I'll say real quick, if I can ask you to recognize them.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant to acknowledge you before I started. There is our, we have visiting Boy Scout Troop 202. If you'd stand, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. This is Boy Scout Troop, remain standing. This is Boy Scout Troop 202 that meets at Spring Valley Presbyterian Church, and you're here working on your citizenship and the community badge, is that correct? Thank you so much for being here. You could have done this anywhere in the community, but you chose to be with us. And as students of District 2, I presume, we bless you and we thank you for being here. Welcome.
Ms. Mackey, you want to come give certificates out tonight? Dr. Davis, Ms. Mackey, members of the board, as always, I appreciate the opportunity to recognize our high achievers, and tonight, we have a few. We're focusing on our educators. Our students are a little busy right now, which our educators are too, but we have a few we want to try to squeeze in before we break for winter. So first, I would like to call up Lakeisha Cook from Muller Road Middle School with her principal, Mr. Sean Bishden. Ms. Cook here. So a couple of weeks ago, as the board members know, we helped the South Carolina Association of School Administrators pull off a big surprise for Ms. Cook. She thought she was coming to give us an explanation of how they use data at Muller Road Middle School, but when she walked into the room, Beth Vivs congratulated her on being selected as the 2019 South Carolina Middle Level Assistant Principal of the Year. Before you go sit down, I do want to say a few nice things about you, because you are very deserving of that award, and I just want everybody here to know exactly why you received it. First of all, she wears many, many hats as Assistant Principal at Muller Road. She is the leader of the seventh grade team, the school athletic director, and oversees the Avid program. She constantly strives to always do more for students and teachers, and never wavers in her commitment to Muller Road's motto, "One Team, One Direction." Her leadership style and professionalism help create a positive culture in the school and surrounding community. Now, she competes in the national competition to be named Middle Level Assistant Principal of the Year for our country. So we will send you positive thoughts and cheering for you all the way. Congratulations again. Next, we're going to ask Jennifer Barnes from the Center for Inquiry, along with her lead teacher, Dr. Lynn Mueller, to come forward. Ms. Barnes received the Cengage Learning Outstanding Early Childhood Practitioner Award from the National Association of Early Childhood Teacher Educators. Only one teacher in the nation is chosen each year for this honor. It is given to a teacher who has made a significant impact mentoring pre-service teachers in the field of early childhood education. And in a time when we're facing teacher shortage, this type of dedication is very important. During the awards ceremony, the presenter read this excerpt from one of her nomination letters, said, "While Ms. Barnes is valued as a remarkable kindergarten and first-grade teacher, Jennifer's reach extends far beyond the walls of her classroom and her own school. She is well-known as a mentor to pre-service and in-service teachers across the state and the country. As a 22-year member of the Richland 2 family with 20 years at the Center for Inquiry, we are extremely proud of her and know that she most definitely deserves this honor." Congratulations, Jennifer. Now, we're going to recognize outstanding physical education teachers in the district that have been recognized or honored by the South Carolina Association for Physical Education and Sport, known as SCAPES. First, I'm going to ask Rachel Lindman to come up, and Katania Davis, who's Chief Instructional Support Officer, to join her. Is Ms. Lindman here? Rachel is in her fifth year as an Adaptive Physical Education Specialist, working in our Instructional Support Services Department. So she travels all across the district, providing services for her students. She was named the 2018 SCAPES Teacher of the Year Award for the Adaptive Physical Education Level. She loves the creative challenge of making physical activity and sport accessible to students despite cognitive and physical limitations. Her passion for serving students with special needs has driven her to create numerous extracurricular school and district programs. She plans quarterly festivals to celebrate her students, inviting all students and parents into support and be spectators as the student athletes show off and celebrate the progress they have made. And if that isn't enough, she serves as the cross-country coach and track coach, and is vice president of the Track and Cross Country Coaches Association. I think we could go on and on. I've heard lots of great things about you, but the bottom line is you work hard for your students, and we're glad you got this award. Congratulations. The second teacher that received an award from SCAPES is Ms. Debbie Burkhagan, who is the lead teacher for the Get Fit Magnet Program. She could not be here tonight, because she's attending an event with her mother, but April Schell, her principal, is going to come accept her certificate. And while she's getting the certificate, I'll tell you that this is the third time Debbie has received the SCAPES Teacher of the Year Award for the middle school physical education level. She pioneered the Get Fit program 10 years ago, establishing it as a model program for others in the state. Around the state, she has assisted DEHEC with the implementation of the statewide fitness grant project, and was a major contributor to the Middle School South Carolina Physical Education Assessment Program. So we congratulate Ms. Burkhagan. I know, Michelle, you will pass along our congratulations. Thank you for coming. For our last recognition tonight, I'd like to ask Mark Dyer from Blithewood High to please come forward. His principal, Matt Sherman, cannot be here, but I believe Assistant Principal Jennifer Krabs was going to try to make it. Did Ms. Krabs make it? Scott tied up with something. Mr. Dyer teaches AP Human Geography and has been named 2018 American Geographical Society Geography Teacher Fellow. The awards tonight have been really long names. He is one of just 50 teachers from across the country selected to participate in this third year of the initiative. As part of his award, he attended the AGS Fall Symposium last month at Columbia University in New York City. There, he gained valuable, cutting-edge content knowledge and awareness of workplace skills his students will need in order to succeed in geospatial companies. The American Geographical Society also provides resources and guidance to teachers seeking to develop projects for their classrooms. Congratulations, Mr. Dyer, and thank you for your hard work. And that concludes our recognitions. Thank you all again.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. We thank our students on a regular basis for their accomplishments and their efforts, but it's always a special treat to acknowledge the teachers and administrators who pour directly into them. We thank you. We thank you for that. Moving on to item six, Arkansas Agenda. We could get a motion to approve the same, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the December 11th, 2018 board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I second.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. At this point, it's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the consent agenda, and at this time, we'll cast our votes.
By a vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Next on our agenda is item 7.1, School Focus. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Our school focus for this afternoon, Dr. Brendan Mack Foxworth, Ridgeview High School Principal, and the school's Med Pro 21 Magnet Director, Ellen Harrison, will share highlights of the school's implementation of the school-wide magnet.
Good evening, Dr. Davis. Honorable school board members, thank you for the privilege of allowing us to update you on year one of the Ridgeview AIMS Magnet. I would like to introduce Ellen Harrison, Ridgeview High School Medical, excuse me, Magnet Curriculum Specialist.
Ms. Harrison.
Hello. Thank you for letting us share the excitement that we have going on at Ridgeview. Ridgeview is a Med Pro 21 school. Med is medicine, Pro, profile for the South Carolina graduate, and 21, 21st century skills. The Med Pro 21 Project is a part of a five-year grant that is funding the magnet, and it is building wall-to-wall magnets within a continuum that consists of Bridge Creek, Rice Creek, Kelly Mill, and Ridgeview. Ridgeview aims arts innovation for medical sciences. We believe it's all at the View, and in our smaller learning communities, we focus on science, technology, engineering, arts, math, and medical, STEAM. And tonight, I'm going to share some exciting initiatives, activities, programs that we have happening. Academics. Avid, we are not new to the Avid framework. Ridgeview was the first high school in our district to have Avid, but what is different now? Our teachers throughout the school are receiving professional development, so they are using the Avid strategies in order to deliver their curriculum. It's also being taught along the continuum, so by the time the students come to high school, they will be familiar with the language, and there is a common language of the strategies. A part of sustainability is professional development, and one professional development activity that we have going on is called Power 30. This happens 30 minutes prior to a faculty meeting. Our faculty meetings take place on Monday afternoons, so this really needs to be high-energy, packed with information, and it is delivered by our teachers. And teachers get to choose which professional development they want to go to based on a self-reflection and where they feel they need growth. This is something I'm really excited about. This happened at the beginning of the school year, and it's called a blazing adventure. We realized a lot of our teachers in our school do not live in our district. They know Killian Road and Hardscrabble Road, but there's so much more to the Ridgeview community. So at the very beginning of the school year, we had teachers go out in small teams, and they visited schools of the continuum, they visited businesses in our area, and most importantly, they visited our Blazer families to welcome them to the school year and excite them about what's to come. Service and outreach is something that Ridgeview, it's a part of us, and we have a strong bond with our neighbors, Rice Creek Elementary. But in order to foster that bond and growth between the students, our football coach created leaders to the field. He asked for the Rice Creek Elementary School administration to identify leaders in their school, students that have really shown strong character in the first semester. These students were recognized at a football game, and they ran out onto the field with our varsity football players. And you can see the smiles on their faces tell the story, and it really means a lot to the students, big and small. Wellness is something that's very innovative within our Med Pro 21 Project. And at Ridgeview, we have a room called New to the View, and it's for students that are new to Ridgeview. In high school, lunchtime can be very stressful for students that are new to the school. So this offers a place for students to come to. They can socialize with Blazer ambassadors and really become accustomed to our family, our traditions, and the atmosphere. So this is our first implementation year for five years, and our next bold steps, we're starting with our freshmen so that they really know that they are a part of a magnet. This is a school-wide magnet. Everyone at Ridgeview is an AIMS student, and we are going to have freshmen in action. One activity that they will do, they will have a student facilitated conference. So if you think of this as professional development for adults, but we're taking it to the students. They will host the sessions, they will decide what sessions to host, and then they will also decide what sessions to attend. We're also going to have community service, so we need some places to serve our community and get our students out into the community so they feel and give back. This is going to happen within our schools, in our neighborhoods, in our business communities. And lastly, Classroom 3.0. This is going to be a space in Ridgeview that is going to be one of a kind to our district. When you walk into this room, you are going to know that it is innovative. It is cool. The walls can talk. And this is going to be a place where teleconferencing can take place. Teachers can bring their classrooms in and immediately connect with someone outside the walls of our school. We can also take virtual field studies. We can tour college campuses. We could tour the inside of a heart. We could watch an operation or surgery take place. So Classroom 3.0, it's coming. We're not sure how it's going to look, but it's going to be cool. So at Ridgeview, it's all at the View.
We'll take any questions you may have.
Board members. Dr. Hawkins-Johnson.
I have a question. Thank you so much for that presentation. It was awesome. Just, you mentioned that all students are AIMS students, so there are no requirements to be a part of the Med Pro 21?
Just that you have to be a student enrolled at Ridgeview High School. That's it?
Mm-hmm. It's a part of the lottery, the magnet application?
Right. So everyone can, of course, we have a limit, but once you're enrolled at Ridgeview High School, you're a part of the Ridgeview AIMS Magnet, school-wide.
Okay. And the next question, the bold next step, can you elaborate a little more on that?
Well, I think one of the things that we want to do is when we talked about going out, getting our freshmen, we currently have 450 freshmen. So one of the things that we really want to do, yes, we teach them 21st century skills. We teach them writing skills. We teach them presentation skills, but we want to really work really hard on making sure that they are prepared, good citizens. So we want to go out and serve our community. So when Ms. Harrison said, "We're going to need places for our kids to give back." We're currently looking for businesses, we're looking for parks, we're looking for Richland 2 schools that need anything done. We're going to send them out into community so they can feel what it's like to be a part of something to give back to their community. We're building it. We're not sure how it will go, but this is something we know that we have to start if we want to take a bold step with where we want these kids to end up and be really great citizens and get back to their community. You're welcome. May I take a point of privilege? I have two of my teachers in the audience, our Teacher of the Year-elect, Ms. Knox, and our first-year teacher, Ms. Love, who's a Ridgeview alumni. Thank you.
If you'd both stand. I guess there are no more questions. I guess there are no more questions, but thank you all for your presentation. Because they walked away, so. Were there any more?
That just means I have good questions.
Yeah, I guess, but I thank you for your presentation. I know that as a Ridgeview parent, when I was there years ago, I remember all of the ideas and all that you had that were concepts at that time. So although this is part of your magnet program, I know that these things are part of the vision for the school, so it's just nice to see those things come into fruition and growing, and welcome, welcome. Mr. Manning.
Not a question, just a comment. I really like the continuum idea. You don't have to get up. I know how to find you if I need to ask deeper questions, but I really like the continuum idea. I know we have that with our IB program, we've got it with your program. I think it's a great way to engage the younger folks and kind of that feeder program. Athletics have done it forever. I love the idea that we're doing it in academics, and I also enjoy the fact the young folks getting involved, coming out on the field. I know your football players also go sometimes open doors in the rider line at the elementary schools. I really, really like that synergy that you all have with the other middle schools and the elementary schools in that area. So thank you for all the work that you do with that.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Outstanding. Thank you all. Moving on to item eight, public participation. This is the portion of our agenda where those folks who have requested to address the board and have signed up can do so. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. And three minutes, you know, if you need to finish your sentence or your statement, that's fine, but it's three minutes, three minutes. Oh, grace, no grace tonight. But we have two people who've signed up at this time. One is Chris Haas, and just as a reminder, I know you've been here a few times, one, two, three, four, five times, but we'd like you to refrain from, you know, mentioning specific, you know, teachers or schools or students or any personal identifying information about you, but welcome, we're happy to have you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to begin by providing a brief update on actions taken by SE for Ed. So after the elections were completed last month, thousands of teachers around the state, including many here in Richland 2, felt both angry and ejected. Numerous politicians with a long history of turning a blind eye to the needs of our public schools returned once again to offices and posts where it feels likely they'll continue to value the needs of business, such as billions lost to tax exemptions each year, or the needs of education, such as only adequately funding education eight of the past 40 years in our state. So to take a proactive stance on this, we're calling, we're emailing, we're writing our legislators to make certain that they understand that we'll no longer passively accept the fact that our schools are consistently being underfunded year after year. A large group of teachers from around the state had also taken personal days, or they had arranged for coverage tomorrow, to ensure that we can be at the state grounds for a legislative session in which we could speak directly to those on the Finance Committee regarding our classroom experiences, as well as our needs and our expectations of them as our elected officials. Sadly, the agenda for that session was altered at the last moment, and the opportunity for public participation is no longer being offered by them. Fortunately, Representative Russell Ott had agreed to meet with us and will meet with us tomorrow, and folks can also request to meet with their personal legislators while they're on the state grounds. I just think it's frustrating that these opportunities only happen during school hours when they need to hear from us and they need to know what's going on in schools, and that's something that should be addressed on their part. So in addition to this work, we're also meeting as area groups around the state so that we can discuss local issues that prevent or weaken our ability to teach, to negatively affect our classroom learning with our students, or to lead to teacher burnout. I'd like to acknowledge and thank our district for the efforts that you've put in place to make certain that teacher voices are heard, one of which is to come to these meetings and to come up for public participation. Another is the institution of the Faculty Advisory Committee. So my school's representative reported back to us last Monday at our faculty meeting that Dr. Davis had instructed everyone in that group that they had better be willing and able to have honest discussions and to share issues they feel are important if they want the FAC to work the way it's supposed to work. I would say, though, that if I've learned anything from my work with SE for Ed this year, it's that an alarming number of teachers are very much afraid to have honest discussions with anyone who holds power over them, despite the fact that we urge them, and we urge them, and we urge them to please, please reach out, right? Have these discussions, but I think for many, there have just been too many negative past experiences that have led to them being reprimanded. led to them being reprimanded or feeling as though they're being reprimanded, and it keeps them from speaking up. So the beauty of our area meetings is I hold no power over anyone, literally. Our discussions are honest and they're heartfelt, and our goals of these meetings are to name and prioritize our needs and then develop plans of action at the classroom level and at the school level and the district level so we can reach out and find the people we need to find who can help us find solutions for these. So my time is up, and I'm not going to get to share those tonight, but I invite any of you to contact me, or I will come back and share them three minutes at a time over the ensuing meetings.
It's okay.
Thank you.
It's okay. Thank you for sharing. We appreciate that. And I will say that we ask folks to limit their comments to three minutes at the podium, but if there are ever any ideas or anything that you don't get to finish presenting, you can always follow up with us in writing and share with us anything you want to, and there's no limit to that. So thank you so much for taking the time to be here tonight. Next, Lisa Ellis. Same rules.
Yes, I'm gonna speak fast. Madam Chair, Dr. Davis, members of the board, good evening. My name is Lisa Ellis. I'm a teacher at Blythewood High School and also the founder of SE4Ed. I'm here to speak to you tonight on the topic of attracting and retaining quality teachers. I would like to share a little of my background to offer perspective on the point that I plan to make. I spent almost 15 years in Richland 2. The first 14 years at Ridgeview High School as an English teacher and the Director of Student Activities, and then Blythewood High School for a little over a year as an English teacher. From there, I moved to Fairfield Middle School in Fairfield County, and then last year I was at Hand Middle School in Richland 1. This experience has given me a broader perspective on not just what teaching is like in different districts, but also what effective leadership looks like. Add to that my recent degree in organizational leadership and founding SE4Ed, and I believe that I can offer some insight on this topic of attracting and retaining quality teachers. Over the past few weeks, I've heard from several different avenues that Richland 2 test scores have been on the decline. In an effort to stop this decline, the district has chosen to use a variety of stopgap methods, including reading programs, mastery-based software benchmarks, et cetera. While I believe that the intent is honorable, the reality of these measures has led only to less time for planning effective instruction, less time for collaboration among teachers, and less opportunity for actually engaging with students. What these one-size-fits-all methods fail to take into account are the individual students and the talents of the teacher. If you compare the decline in test scores, and I would argue that a single test score is never valid, you will see a direct correlation to the South Carolina teacher shortage. I reviewed the SARA Supply and Demand Report starting with 2008. The 2012 report is where you begin to see urgency in regard to the inability to fill teacher vacancies. Because of the geographical location and the positive reputation of Richland 2, the direct effects of the South Carolina teacher shortage probably did not enter the district until several years later. However, Richland 2 would have been affected indirectly because the district would have been dealing with a smaller pool of teacher candidates from which to hire. While Richland 2 may have been able to fill its vacancies, it would have had less candidates to choose from, thus affecting the quality of the teacher hired. Currently, the district has 28 teaching vacancies for this school year. According to research, the quality of the teacher is the single most school-related factor that influences student achievement. By significantly increasing teacher salaries above competing Midlands districts across the board, the district will increase the depth of its pool of candidates. Richland 2's salary schedule is the highest in the Midlands, but it is only higher by $500 to $1,000, which is not reason enough for great teachers to want to change districts. If you raise the teacher's salary schedule 3% to 5%, that would give incentive for teachers to come to Richland 2 and teach our students. Once the district has hired quality teachers, it is vital that the district retains them as the cost to hire and train one new teacher can cost upwards of $20,000. My time is over, but my last couple of points are you retain teachers through there by giving them autonomy and the ability to do what they do best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair? Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
We don't direct the people who come to public participation. We don't directly respond at this time, but at the end, when you're giving your closing comments, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome. Next, we're moving on to Item 9.1 Legislative Update. Mr. Shadd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the most immediate information is that we just got back from the South Carolina School Board Association's Legislative Advocacy and Delegate Assembly this past weekend. Dr. Cheryl Caution-Parker was a delegate along with myself, and our alternate was Mr. James Manning. I wanted to say that some of these very topics were, where they were discussed, we did have a panel of legislators, some couple of senators and representatives, who came and spoke to the School Board Association, which comprises all of our school districts in the state. And teacher pay was a point of conversation. I won't necessarily say contention. We also talked about Act 388, funding for school districts, a little bit about takeover of school districts that is happening around our state as well. But we did have, I believe, 43 resolutions that the delegates voted on, and just some of the topics were school start date, eliminating a retired teacher cap, consolidation or deconsolidation of school districts, fully funding the educational mandates that we get from the state, opposing state takeover, and raising teacher salaries to the national average. I will say that we are, the General Assembly is about to come back into session in January, and the School Boards Association is encouraging all school district board members to come for the first couple of days of session so that we can make our voices heard and talk to our representatives, our senators, en masse. But what I'm also encouraging our school board, because we've agreed to become zealous advocates as it relates to talking to our General Assembly, but also our parents, our teachers, to just contact your local representatives, the Richland County delegation, obviously, and explain to them the need to make sure that education is a higher priority. You know, the General Assembly has a lot to work on. They have a lot of agencies that they have to fund with our budget. What I'm encouraged by is that apparently we have a big influx of funding that's coming in this year that can obviously be divvied up. What I am a little bit disheartened by is that there was a study recently that said that because of these, you know, the low taxes and the impact fees and all of that, that they do, that they used to try to encourage businesses to come into our state. Unfortunately, that has had an impact to the tune of $318 million that could have gone to our school districts but did not. All the while, our powerful business lobby is now encouraging our General Assembly to increase those impact incentives or what have you for businesses to come in. I know that we have to have industry, but we have to have an economy where we have workers that are ready. We want to educate our children so that they are career college-ready, but we gotta make sure that they have all the twos. And part of that is encouraging our teachers to be retained, to recruit the best, and provide the incentives. We have, unfortunately, a lot of times it comes to money, and they do have those legislative priorities. We just need to make sure that education is at the top. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shadd, for that excellent report. Are there any questions or comments at this time? If not, thank you for sharing, Mr. Shadd. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Dr. Holmes?
Okay, I'll make my comment now so I can talk. In speaking with the legislative conference that we just came from, we were at that conference, and Representative Govan was pretty much chairing that particular conference. There was a point where it came up about teacher salary and teacher retention, and they asked the audience to please stand up if you had a comment to make about that. Y'all don't know me yet because I'm fairly new, but I'm probably the person that's gonna make a comment. So I got up and I made a comment, and I talked about the teacher salaries, because the thinking was that they only say that 14% of people leave education for salaries. And they did a survey. I said, "Well, you know, you can make a survey, say whatever you want to say depending on who you ask, because every teacher that I've talked to has a problem with the salaries." And I made some other various comments. Needless to say, Representative Govan at that time asked me to come to the State House to speak to the body of his conference, his committee, about teacher pay and cultural competency. Needless to say, Representative actually called me today and asked me to go ahead and try to get on their calendar to speak for the meeting that was supposed to take place on the 17th. Unfortunately, they had already publicized that particular agenda, and so I was not able to get on that particular meeting. But I've also, but he's told me, so I called him back and I said, "Well, Representative, I can't get on that particular meeting." So he said, "Well, don't worry about that. They're gonna ask me to come to another meeting to speak with them and also maybe to participate with the Black Caucus on how we can get our teacher salaries up, teacher retention up, and things like that." When I ran for this position, that's an important factor for me, and I intend to follow through with that. But I wanted to comment earlier because I wanted you all to know that when we attend these things, we are there, we are really going to work hard to try to see that we get that done. And I do intend to get in touch with them again, and I will be at that meeting. We are your advocates, and we are here for you. I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Any other questions or comments at this time? One thing I can say to your point, I appreciate your report, Mr. Shadd. I know that we go to these conferences, and some school boards are larger than ours, others are smaller. I've only been on the board four years, but I can say that every time we have a conference where we have an opportunity to go and learn more, to become better advocates, we have, you know, if not 100%, you know, at least 75, 80, 90% of our board members who are there and actually in the breakout sessions and actually in the meetings and actually retaining information and commenting and going to the podium and asking questions and advocating. So that is one of the things I just want to, you know, tip our own hat and thank our board for being engaged when we go to a conference. It's actually a learning opportunity for us, and I think our board does a good job of going and trying to soak up all the information that we can to bring it back and be better advocates at the positions in which we're serving. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, I apologize.
Mr. Shadd, you have another comment?
You can indulge me. I had it written down, but I apologize. I'm also proud to say on behalf of Richland District 2 that the Delegate Assembly voted for officers and directors for the 2018, 2019, and Region 8, which covers Richland District 1 and Richland District 2. We have the representative, our very chair, Mrs. Amelia Mackey. So congratulations on being voted upon that by the entire state. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Shadd. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shadd. I appreciate your kind words. Moving on to, no other questions or comments? I'm sorry. No? Moving on to Item 10.1, well, Item 10, Voting on Executive Session Items, specifically 10.1. If we could entertain a motion at this time with regard to student admission requests into the district's adult education program.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agastany. It's been moved and properly seconded. At this time, we'll cast our votes with regard to the same. Item 10.2, Student Appeals. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Manning?
I may make a recommendation that for student number one, we uphold the district's Student number two, go back to home school with services. Student number three, Blythewood Academy. Student number four, Blythewood Academy. Student number five, deny the appeal. On the addendum, student number one, Blythewood Academy. Actually, I'll make this easy for you. Students one through seven on the addendum, Blythewood Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. And while Mrs. Sherman is recording that, is there a second?
Second.
Second, done, okay. Mrs. Agastany? Does that look accurate, Mr. Manning?
I'm reading, I'm slow. That's correct, yes.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that we accept the recommendation of the motion made by Mr. Manning. At this time, if you'd cast your votes, please. By vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Moving on in our agenda to Item 10.3, Contractual Matter Regarding Architectural Services. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Dr. Holcomb, Johnson?
I move to approve the architect contracts reviewed in executive session and to authorize the superintendent to execute them on behalf of the district. The firms are, one, AAG Architects; two, Brownstone Design; three, Craig Garland-Davis; four, Goodwin Mills &amp; Kaywood; five, John D. Bowman &amp; SGA; six, LS 3P Associates; seven, MacMillan Parsons Smith; number eight, Mosley Architects of South Carolina; number nine, Quackenbush Architects Plus Planners; and ten, Stevens &amp; Wilkinson.
Thank you, Dr. Holcomb, Johnson. Is there a second to the motion?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. It's been moved and properly seconded. By vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Thank you. Moving on in our agenda to Item 11, Old Business Action Requested. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Will Anderson will come before you this evening to provide information regarding policy revisions. This, again, is new business, no action requested. We'll be looking at policy revisions EBC, ECA, and EBCE, as well as revisions to ECAC. Mr. Anderson?
I think we're on the old one first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Davis?
I digress. I apologize. I'm moving y'all on a lot faster than y'all ready to go.
He wants to get us out of here.
Old Business Action Requested. These are policies that were brought before you already in our last board meeting, so that will be policies EAB, hazardous materials, as well as DEE. Mr. Anderson?
You guys have the proposals. There's no changes to the proposals from the first reading.
Mr. Shadd, if you have a question or comment?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept policy revision EAB, hazardous materials, as well as policy revision DEE, energy conservation.
Thank you, Mr. Shadd. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Holcomb, Johnson. Is there any discussion at this time? If not, we'll cast our votes. cast our votes. By vote of seven to zero, the motion unanimously carries. Item 12, New Business, No Action Requested. Dr. Davis.
Now. Emergencies. The first policy is relating to emergency, and it's your policy just determining that we, the superintendent is the designee, will have a plan in place for preparing for emergencies. Happy to answer any questions you all may have.
And if there's not a question or comment, feel free to move on to the next one. Mr. Anderson, thank you so much.
The second policy, Revision ECA, Security. Once again, very similar to emergencies, but it's just basically explaining that we will provide a safe and secure environment for our children and students and what, I'm sorry, change from children to students and the proper things that we will do for security. Any questions I may answer?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I just want to make a comment that I think that Dr. Davis in this district has been extremely proactive in our security measures, the policies, the, the work that we've done with the Sheriff's Department over the last year to conduct a mock exercise at Jackson Creek. And I know, Dr. Davis, I think you had made a recommendation that we've implemented here where, you know, we haven't had fires and we do fire drills, but we need to also do drills for security and safety in our schools. And I know Molly Spearman's picked that up and helped to push that through the district. So I really appreciate the proactive stance that we've had and will continue to have as it relates to security in our schools, not only through the bond and the physical components, but also through the policies and the procedures that we have in place to protect our staff and students.
Thank you very much. All, all thanks goes to Chuck Earls in the back, who likes to sit in the back a lot, as y'all know. So Chuck has been a tremendous amount of work, but of course, the leadership from Dr. Davis and you all leading the way on that has been tremendous. So thank you for the kind work.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chuck.
He waves. He's waving.
Any other questions about the security policy? All right. The next one is dealing with policy EBCE, school closing and cancellations. That's basically, the board has given the superintendent the authority to close schools for a variety of measures, being weather and other days. Any questions about that policy? All right. And the last policy, Policy ECAC is in regards to vandalism. And this is the policy dealing with how we will respond to any person that has vandalized our property and is subject to proper legal action, and the superintendent, in his or designee, taking care of that action. Any questions about vandalism?
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the fourth paragraph. It says, "Any student of the district who enters or comes upon district property as opposed to school grounds," because that's being struck, proposed. "Any time of the day or night and does damage to anyone's personal property on school grounds." Explain to me what that means by that, anyone's personal property. How do you define that?
So if they just, you know, key someone's car, for example, or if it's any personal belonging that they have, then they vandalize personal property. We're talking about something they've done to disciplinary action in terms of, you know, a fight or something, that's a little different. But this is all dealing with, with property, you know, person's property. Cell phone may be an example of something. If someone steals or damages some, a student's personal cell phone.
Okay. Mr. Shad, I think I can give you maybe an answer that would help explain that. So for example, let's say we have an away football game and our cheerleaders drive to the school, and it's after school hours. Their cars may be left on school grounds. At that time, it's 9:00, 10:30 at night. They get back. If someone comes onto the school property or district property and vandalize a student's car, they're still responsible. It's still the same as if they vandalize school property. So the next, then I think the next part of that policy says, "or district, and/or district property," or something of that nature. So it protects the student or the teacher's personal property, why it's on district property, from being vandalized at any time. So we do have cars that are left overnight. Sometimes we do out-of-town field trips. Some teachers park their cars there for multiple days while they're on their, while they're on field trips. So it protects their, their property, or anything that is left as their property on school grounds.
But this specifically only talks about if it's any student that come, any student of the district that comes and does the damage. If it's just another member of the public, we don't have that same, the person who puts their personal property on our district property does not have that same expectation that the, as this is saying, that the district will ensure that that violator is responsible. Am I reading that right? This only applies to the student. It doesn't apply to other members of the public. Right?
As stated right now, it only states student. Yes.
Okay. And, okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
So recommendation to strike student to person, persons?
That would be my recommendation, but I, we may need to get legal to talk about that as well, including that entire paragraph.
And we'll double-check to see if there's the other, another policy. I know we have other policies regarding others' own property when they're not, you know, when they're not supposed to be on property. So that may be there for a reason, but we can double-check that and get some clarification on that language.
And should we assume that if this passes, this is going to then go into the student handbook, so students, the parents and legal guardians are aware that that is a consequence if they are found to have done damage to anyone's, meaning someone comes to a basketball game and their property gets vandalized, they have an expectation that the district is going to make sure that that student and their parent or legal guardian is going to be personally responsible for that? Is that my understanding? And, and before you answer that, let me just explain why. My understanding is if a government entity or anyone puts themselves out there and lets, let, they let it be known that they are going to go above and beyond their duty to that member of the public and make sure that someone is personally liable, then that may expose that entity to liability if that does not happen, is what I'm saying. I understand the intent is to try to pass off the liability to the one who actually did it, which may still come out in restitution if it's a criminal offense or a civil case. But if we go the extra mile in taking on a duty, then we hold that as well if we don't make sure that happens. I don't know how we ensure that a legal guardian is going to be responsible for their child's misconduct.
Mr. Shad, do you want to get some more information with regard to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Can we get, someone get with Mr. Shad to make, we have clarity?
We'll have to collaborate with some other.
Those are good questions. Those are good questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding that policy?
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I don't have any questions. Just a comment. Just want the folks that's sitting out here or the ones that's just viewing us to know that although you see some of us sit quietly, we get these policies in advance. So sometimes we submit our questions in advance. So that's why you may not hear a lot of us asking questions. So I don't want you to think that we don't care or we don't understand what's going on. Sometimes we submit the questions in advance because we don't want to tie you guys up all night. So they take care of that before we actually get here. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you. And all the policies are posted to your agenda so the public could view those if they wanted to see this. So, yes.
Any other questions or comments on that one? If not, we'll move on. Mr. Anderson.
All right. That's it for me.
Is there any other comment?
No, that's it.
You good?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next, item 12.5, Proposal, A Calendar For The Upcoming School Year. Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, it's a key price is coming before you this evening to share the proposals. Proposal for the school board, 2019-2020 calendar. Mr. Price.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Dr. Davis, ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's my privilege to bring to you tonight for first reading the proposal and recommendation for the 2019-2020 school calendar. As you recall, for those of you who were sitting here last year during the time of this presentation, we had done a number of different surveys, and we were able to report that of all the different groups that responded to the survey, there was one option that was the favorite for every group that responded. This year, not so much. So as a quick review, we have a faculty advisory committee and a parent advisory committee that we have empowered to have a heavy hand in the development of these calendar proposals. And in our first meeting with both groups separately, we went through different things that had to be considered when building a calendar. And then we turned the challenge over to the members to build their ideal calendar and bring it back to the group in the form of a presentation. And I was glad to hear in Mr. Shad's legislative update that the topic of the uniform start date is once again becoming a topic of interest. And if you haven't done so already, we took the opportunity last year to reach out to our local legislators to ask that they return the autonomy of developing the school calendar to local school districts rather than having one uniform start date. So if you join me in that belief, as well as Dr. Davis, I encourage you to take this time now, while the, while the iron is hot, and reach out and let them know that that is still our request. Because if we had more control over when we started, we would have many more options that we would be able to consider. That includes ending Semester One before winter break and having a balanced calendar of the same number of days in first semester with the same number of days second semester. Unfortunately, with the uniform start date of having to wait until at least the third Monday in August, we're limited with how much we can do. And for everyone's peace of mind, how much we're going to cram into a semester. So all of that is taken into consideration. So we gave all of these different guidelines that folks needed to consider when building a calendar. We gave them out to everyone, and we asked everyone to be, bring back a proposal. And this year, we had 23 different submissions. 21 of those came from members of the FAC, and two of those came from members of our PAC. And just like before, maybe not even one of them was exactly like another. So those were 23 different proposals. Unfortunately, we weren't able to consider all of them for reasons such as the 180 days of school didn't add up. Holidays were entered incorrectly, accidentally. Counts were off with the number of workdays and in-service days, those kinds of things. And as well as, there were some where the semester end for Semester One didn't line up with a workday. So it, it kind of defeated the purpose for having a workday at the end of Semester One. So there were some things that we couldn't consider. We looked for the most common trends, things that appeared in just about every calendar, and we used that in consideration as well. And we also included some outside-of-the-box proposals. So after we went through all of those, we had nine viable options that we could consider. And Tony, if you could click on that link for me, please, sir. When we pulled, and if you could zoom in on that to, to enlarge it, we took these nine options and we sent them out to all members of the FAC and the PAC, gave them time to study over them, and we asked them to come back. And we went through a voting exercise with just those members of those groups. And as you can see, the nine different options are listed down the left. And this year, the FAC requested to see, instead of having one total teacher vote, if we could break it down even further to elementary teachers, middle school teachers, and high school teachers. So we went through all that. And if you look at each of the options, all nine options, every one of them received at least three votes. So what does that tell me? That the odds of making everybody happy with the calendar this year is going to be pretty much impossible. But nevertheless, we move forward. So just a quick review, the top, the top choice of elementary faculty was option one. Top choice of middle was option two. Top choice of high was option nine. The top choice of all FAC members combined was option nine. The top choice of parents was option one. And the top total choice of all FAC and PAC members combined was option one. So if you look at the far right column of that chart, as a result of those votes, you see four options that kind of separated themselves from all the others. That was option one, option two, option seven, and option nine. So we took those four options and we relabeled them A, B, C, and D in the same order. And we built another survey, and with the help of Dr. John Arnold, we sent a survey out to all employees and all parents in Richland Two to get their feedback. Okay? Tony, if you would go back.
Yeah. Do you have a question?
And if you will click on that link for me to see the results of everyone's vote.
Got you.
And you're going to have to zoom in on this one as well. Go back just a little bit. There we go. So if you see the total, we had 4,889 participants in the survey. And if you look, you see option A, B, C, and D. Remember, that was one, two, seven, and nine. So now, the top choice for Richland Two employee was now option two, which was option B. At 28.8%, you see the total number there was 434 compared to 409. The top two options were B and A. For Richland Two parents, they were separated by one vote. Option A at 740, and option B at 739. And then those folks who were categorized as being both a Richland Two parent and an employee, the top two choices were option B at 220 votes and option D with 153. Looking at the total, the top two were option B at 1,393 and option A with 1,300. So, I wish I could say that everyone voted for the same option this year, but it didn't turn out that way. So it makes our work a little more interesting. Okay, Tony, if you could go back to the presentation? So I wanted to look, I wanted to share with you the key differences in those top two choices, option A and option B. And after going through this, what we decided that we want to do differently next year with the survey that goes out to everyone, kind of like this year with the FAC, we broke it up by elementary, middle, and high. Next year, we wanted to make sure that we, we kind of specify teaching employee versus non-teaching employee. And I'll explain why we think that may be a good step moving forward in just a moment. But to compare the key differences in the two calendars, option A, there are six workdays before the first day of school, and option B, there are five. In option A, there are two student holidays in October, and option B, there are three student holidays in October. Here's a big difference. In option A, there was a three-day Thanksgiving break. In option B, there was a five-day Thanksgiving break. Big difference. There were the same 11 days for winter break in both options. And there was another big difference in option A and option B that was important to especially the high school members of our FAC. And that was to have a workday at the end of Semester One so that they could finalize grades, update schedules, and be ready for Semester One to start. Without that, what they've had to do in years past is to have two half-days to end the semester, to try to do the work that they need to do to close out the semester. With option B, there's no workday at the end of Semester One, and there's a concern with the way the calendar looks and feels around MLK Day. Tony, if you could click on that link with the MLK Day. And if you'll zoom in one or two clicks, scroll down to option two, and let's look at January. So if you look in January, January 20th is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The end of the semester is January 22nd. So that would mean, in order to pull that off, we would have no school on Monday, a half-day on Tuesday, a half-day on Wednesday, and then a full day to start Semester Two on Thursday. So while that's not impossible, it's not really ideal. Tony, if you would scroll back up to option one to show the difference in how that looks in option one, or A. If you look at January, January 16th is the last day of Semester One. If you look at January, January 16th is the last day of semester one. January 17th is a workday for teachers and a student holiday. Then we have a student holiday on Martin Luther King Jr. Day on the 20th. And then we start semester two with a full day on the 21st. Okay, Tony, we'll go back to the slide presentation. So wrapping up, the last couple of things, differences. This was a big concern for our teachers. There's no break in March with option A. It's a long stretch from President's Day in February to spring break in April. So that was a concern. In option B, there was a two-day student holiday in March on the 12th and the 13th. In option A, April 10th, that's Good Friday. In option A, that's listed as a teacher workday but a student holiday. And in option B, April 10th is the first day of spring break. In option B, it's a six-day spring break, with that being a holiday for everyone. And finally, the big difference is the last day of school. When you add in a five-day break for Thanksgiving, you have to make those days up somewhere. And this is where it comes out in option B. In option A, the last day of school would be Thursday, June 4th for students. And option B, the last day would be the next week on Wednesday, June 10th. So the reason I said we may want to include teacher employees versus non-teacher employees. A non-teaching employee who works year-round, the last day of school is not as significant for them as it is for those who are working in the schools and wrap up with a 190-day contract. So with all of that considered, we discussed this in our cabinet meeting and we came up with a proposal that we're going to call Calendar A dash two. Okay? So this is our proposal for the 1920 calendar. And what we did is we went back to Calendar A. And there's only two differences in A dash two and what the original Calendar A was. Look at Friday the 13th in March. We've added a student holiday in March so that there's not that long stretch between February and April. Because we added a holiday there, that meant we had to push back the last day of school for students from June 4th to June 5th. So the only difference in the original A and A dash two is that piece right there. So there's our proposal and our recommendation for the 2019-2020 calendar. And I'll leave this up for you to view at this time. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Mr. Price, thank you so much for that presentation. And I know how difficult it is every year trying to please everyone. Just had a question. You said that about 4,000 responded back from parents. How do we communicate that with parents, especially the ones that may not have internet? Do we send something out in the mail? Or how were they able to communicate with us?
It was all done electronically. The same way that we did last year. It was all sent out in electronic email to everyone who had an email on file with us in Power School.
Okay, just a suggestion. Maybe next year, we'll come up with a Plan B to make sure those parents who are not on social media have email still able to be able to be a part of this planning. But thank you so much because I know that's difficult and it's a lot of work. And thank you for getting some time in March. As educators, that's a long time to go without a break. So thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Mrs. Agostini?
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Price, for getting this done so quickly. This was, I know that we've talked about having this done at the board's request, but this was really the request of the teachers, getting it done very early on in the year so that they can start planning for the next year. So thank you, and we appreciate you listening to not only us but to the teachers. Thank you.
And if I could make a comment to that. Members of our FAC have actually requested that once we get this one approved and moving forward, could we go ahead and start working on the next year? So it would, please don't be surprised if we come back later in the spring with a proposal for the 2021 calendar. That way, when I bring this to you in December in the future, it will be for two years out instead of one year out. That's a request from our teachers as well.
Additional questions or comments at this time?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning?
I was just noticing all the smiles of the people that weren't involved over here at the table. I think Libby was about to come out of her chair like through this presentation. So thank you, Mr. Price, for picking it up and all the work that y'all did.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Price?
Not yet.
I'm speaking into existence.
Speaking into existence, I hear you.
There you go. Um, am I reading this right? That under A two, the last day of school for students is the fifth, but the teachers come in on that Saturday, the sixth?
Yes, sir.
Is that unusual for teachers to come in?
It's been a few years since we've done that.
It's been a few years, okay.
We've had that in the past. Fortunately, we give our, some opportunities to our school leaders to offer what's called swap days. And oftentimes, teachers who've earned a swap day will have the opportunity to use it on that day so that they've closed out and done everything that they needed to do. By close of day on the fifth, they would have the opportunity to use one of those days that they worked that wasn't originally counted as a 100, of one of their 190 days. They could use it at that time.
And for the edification of the public, what is our, what is the earliest, by law, what's the earliest day that we can start school?
If you look on that calendar, according to law, it's the third Monday in August. So that means we would not be able to start school until August 19th. And as feedback from our teachers, our administrators, and our parents, kicking off the new school year on a Monday and having a full week of school is kind of daunting. And then they appreciate the ability to kind of ease into it with a three-day week to begin with.
Thank you. And I would just like to say, that law came into effect because of a certain coastal county that affects the entire state. That's Exhibit A for being an advocate with the General Assembly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Are there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Price, I just want to say thank you for taking the time, year after year, and explaining what goes into this. I know that transparency is important. And for me, I've always been a big advocate of opportunities for people to have, to give feedback, whether or not it's, you know, accepted or not. But I appreciate your explaining the layers that are put into place to try to get as much feedback as possible. So I just appreciate it, your explaining this process, you know. Of course, every year, you'll try to, you know, improve upon that. And thank you for coming here and sharing that with us. And, okay. And with regard to the calendar, the calendars, the importance of talking to your legislators because those are the people who, you know, who determine the school start date. The people who make those decisions, you know, legislatively, you know, they're not all parents of public school, of public school students. Not all of them have students who are in public school, you know, who are subject, you know, to these dates. And their folks will take their kids out of school regardless. So the folks who have a vested interest in the public schools, please make sure you share with your legislators because you have a vested interest. Not every legislator has a vested interest in that public school calendar. So it's just really important that your voices be heard.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, but thank you. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, just wanted to add one more thing, especially for SC, for Ed. During the conference, Senator Shane Martin said he was going to be a component and was going to make sure that he go back to his colleagues to push that they allow school districts to start their own calendar start date at the beginning of the school year. So I would encourage everyone, let's hold him accountable since he said that at our conference, Senator Shane Martin. And let's send some emails and telephone calls. And let's meet with him to hold him accountable for his comments. Thank you.
Dr. Davis?
Just to echo the sentiment of all the board members. But I also would like to thank the teachers, the parents, for their participation in the survey. And we take what Dr. Elkins Johnson asked us to do to heart, to try to increase the amount of participation from our parents. But it is important that we recognize as a school district that this is not common. I too had an opportunity to work in three separate school districts in the state of South Carolina, urban, rural, and suburban. And I can promise you, this is the only district that I've worked in where employees get to say so, teachers and parents get to say so in the calendar. And so it goes to what Mr. Ha says about, if you are in a position to have a voice and to be an advocate, it's your responsibility to voice your opinion and not to assume that your voice would not be heard. Mr. Price did an outstanding job of facilitating this process. But this information came from those who participated. And it was because they decided to participate, we were able to craft several options and then present those options to groups who had input and influence in making sure that this calendar was something that we could get good buy-in from, not only from our faculty and staff, but also from our teachers. And so we look forward to the ability to be able to do this at a two-year, for two years so we don't have to go through it every year, Mr. Price. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad?
Dr. Davis, since you've mentioned your prior experience in other districts, did the other two districts have parent advisory council and faculty advisory council like we've had for several years now?
One did and one did not. One did and one did not. But we're fortunate, we have parent advisory, student advisory, student leadership advisory, faculty advisory, as well as the creation of classified advisory that I will be creating this year as well so that we can, everyone can have a voice. As I stated before, it is very important for me, for this district, that everyone has a seat at the table and has an opportunity to eat. And so you can't have an opportunity to eat if you're not seated at the table. So we're looking for that from as many partners, not stakeholders, partners, because we are all in this together. So, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, Mr. Price. Next on the agenda, item 12.6, Report, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report ending June 30th, 2018. Dr. Davis?
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have before you this evening our comprehensive annual financial report ending in June 30th, 2018. And to provide you and walk you through this process will be our very own Dr. Harry Moly. Dr. Moly?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Davis. I'm happy to present this report to you tonight. Actually, I'm happy to introduce our accountant to present this report to you tonight. The accounting firm of Burkett, Burkett and Burkett performed our audit and have done for several years now. They do a great job and they're here to report on that. But before they, before Matthew, before I introduce Matthew, I wanted to make sure that y'all understand how much work our office does. Everybody but me, of course. But the people like Shelley Allen and Penny Dinini who are here and the rest of the staff work very hard in assisting the auditors prepare these documents. And so while the auditors come in and make sure it's done correctly, our staff does work a great deal to make this happen. I have here tonight, we have Matthew Hodges. He's the Audit Manager. We talk about this audit, it's actually, as you know, the appropriate name is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or we call it the CAFR. But Matthew's here to help you walk through this very quickly. And I'll let, I'll turn the mic over to him. Matthew?
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Davis, thank you very much for your time this evening. I do have a brief presentation on our financial, on the district's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2018. Are those slides available?
Did we not?
That's fine.
My apologies.
Not a problem.
It is not Matthew's fault. It is my fault. I apologize. I did not afford those to make it in the dark.
Not a problem. I will go ahead and begin with the presentation. So just wanted to provide a brief introduction to our team who performed the audit for the district. Our audit partner is Larry Montague. And he oversaw our audit and approved issuance of our audit reports. Of course, my name's Matthew Hodges again. I served as Audit Manager and oversaw the day-to-day activities of our audit and testing. And Zach Buchanan served as our audit staff and oversaw the performance of the procurement audit for the district. I'm pleased to present that we received full cooperation from your personnel in performing our audit and we encountered no difficulties in performing our audit. The financial statements and note disclosures are presented, fairly presented in accordance with accounting principles that are generally accepted in the United States. And there were no unrecorded misstatements or audit adjustments as a result of our audit. So one of the biggest changes for the district and in its policies for fiscal year 2018 was that the district was required to adopt Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75. That's called Accounting and Financial Reporting for Post-Employment Benefits Other Than Pensions, which is a mouthful. And this statement required the district to present on its government-wide financial statements what is called a net OPEB or Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability. This statement was very similar to a statement that the district was required to adopt back in fiscal year 2015, which dealt with the net pension liability. So for, this is the fourth year that the district has been presenting on its government-wide financial statements, a net pension liability. And that relates to the state's overall deficit in funding pensions for state employees. So PIBA provides information to all government participants in the retirement plan for its allocated share of the state's overall net deficit in pensions. And so this statement that the district adopted for fiscal year 2018 does the exact same thing for the state's overall deficit in other post-employment benefits, namely health insurance and long-term disabilities. Okay? So the district reported on its government-wide financial statements, a net OPEB liability. That number was determined and provided to the district based on an actuarial valuation that was done at the state level. And the district's contributions for health insurance and long-term disability premiums were the basis for its share. Those contributions as it relates to other participants in the state plan. So on the government-wide statements, the district reported that net OPEB liability, which resulted in a reduction in its beginning net position of $301.3 million as of June 30th, 2017. Now, an important thing to realize about that as well is that, again, this is an actuarially determined amount. The district will not have to write a check for $301 million. It is a requirement, though, of all participants in the state plan. Other school districts, other governments, local governments that are required to report that on your financial statements. There we go. And the other side of that is if you've got an enterprise fund as part of your financial statements, you're required to report a further allocation going down in your financial statements of that enterprise fund's share of the deficit. In your case, that's the food service fund. And so food service is required to look at its contributions based on employees in food service as opposed to district-wide employees. And so that resulted in a reduction in food service beginning net position of $2.8 million for, as of July 1, 2017. All right, so our audits followed generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, as well as the audit requirements of the Uniform Guidance. We tested the district's transaction based on our knowledge of the district. We used our professional judgment in determining appropriate sample sizes which were designed to achieve reasonable but not absolute assurance about the district's transactions. That being said, we noted no instances of non-compliance with district, state, or federal policies. We have issued three clean opinions as a result of our audit. First being an unmodified opinion related to the financial statements themselves. Secondly, we noted no deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting. And thirdly, we issued an unmodified opinion related to your compliance with major federal awards. Just a brief look at some financial highlights. The district continues to be in excellent financial position. When we look at the bond ratings, Moody's rating of an AA1 continues as it did from last year as well as Standard &amp; Poor's AA rating. The Certificates of Excellence in Financial Reporting are presented to districts from ASBO and GFOA. Those organizations who go through a very rigorous program, they're reviewed by reviewers from those organizations, reading through these CAFR reports and determining that they are in compliance with governmental accounting standards. So that is above and beyond and in addition to what is done in an audit. And the district has received these awards for 31 consecutive years. And that includes the report for June 30th, 2017. And certainly, we see no reason why that won't continue for an additional year for June 30th, 2018. June 30th, 2018. Management has continued to increase the general fund balance for the 14th year in a row. For fiscal year 2018, general fund balance increased by over $6.7 million, reporting an ending fund balance of over $52.9 million as of June 30th of 2018. And that balance is 19.3% of the school district's operating budget. So, this time, I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, so Matthew, on the proprietary funds, a couple of things. One, you mentioned the food service fund that we show is $1.3 million deficit, I think, is the comment that you made, and that's due, you said, to the, to the benefits component?
That change, the district was required to report a decrease of its beginning fund balance of $2.8 million, and that is only related to this GASB 75 net OPEB liability. It doesn't even take into account the effects of the net pension liability, which, as I said, is a very similar but different requirement.
Okay, but the food service fund is not in trouble by any means, it's just a reporting standard?
It's, it's required to present that share in accordance with those standards.
And then, our self-funded, self-insured workers' compensation, we have enough funding to cover us for what that's intended to do?
Correct. And there's, there's no requirement for that fund that it present anything related to those two standards.
Right, and I understand what's required to present. I'm asking, are we in okay shape to fund what that's supposed to do for us so that we're not in any kind of trouble?
Yes.
I see Dr. Miley shaking his head vigorously out there, so, okay. I think that was the only two questions I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Are there other questions? No. If not, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
And again, I want to apologize for that, Matthew, that was my responsibility and not Matthew's. He sent it to me too early and I forgot about it. So, I apologize.
And we do, the board members-
Next time, I'm going to ask him to send it to me last minute, and I'll take care of it. But thank you, I appreciate your patience.
Yeah, but the board, the board got it, so we appreciate that. We appreciate that. Thank you. Tamika. Next on our agenda, item 12.7, Report, Data Snapshot, State Report Card Reporting, Socioeconomics. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have reporting for us, the data snapshot, state report card, and reporting socioeconomics, Dr. John Arnold, and I think he's going to be assisted by Ms. Audrey Brady as well. Dr. Arnold.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Dr. Davis, members of the board, it's my pleasure to present to you this snapshot of student learning data. You may recall that I was here in September, and at the time, I shared the results of last year's SC Ready and SC Pass tests. Those were the only state tests that were released at the time. This evening, I want to review those test results again, but I want to do so in the frame of our new state accountability plan. Also, I want to share with you the information about the performance of our students on state assessments that had not been released as of September. I've shared with you previously, from the South Carolina Succeeds State Accountability Plan, the two long-term goals of 90% of students graduate college and career citizenship-ready by 2035, and beginning with 2020 graduating class at each, the state, each district, and each school will increase by 5% annually to graduation rate. So, those, those should be familiar to you. What I haven't shared with you in the past is two sub-goals that are contained in this plan. The sub-goals are measured at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. They are among the measures that are used to hold all schools accountable. And for this reason, both the South Carolina Department of Education and Richland 2 publish the percent of students scoring at or above both Level 2 and Level 3. Under South Carolina Succeeds, 90% of students are expected to achieve Level 2 or higher on the state assessments. As you can see from this table, Level 2 is approaches on SC Ready. According to the Department of Education, a student who approaches expectations needs additional academic support to be prepared for the next grade level and to be on track for college and career readiness. Again, by 2035, 70% of students are expected to achieve Level 3 or higher on state assessments. Level 3 on the SC Ready is meets expectations, and a student who meets expectations is prepared for the next grade level and is on track for college and career readiness. I've also included the performance levels that are associated with the South Carolina Alternative Assessment. Federal law requires that we assess all students, that they participate in testing, and the results of those tests are used in the, in the ratings. But because so few students take the South Carolina Alternative Assessments, and because results are highly individual, neither the Department of Education or Richland 2 shares the results of those assessments publicly. With this information in mind, I'd like to quickly review the performance of Richland 2 students on the most recent SC Ready test. This chart shows the percent of students scoring Level 2 or approaches expectations or higher on the English Language Arts Test by grade level. And I've added a red line as an indicator of where the 2035 goal is. So, again, this was our performance in 2018. The red line indicates where we need to be by 2035. This chart shows the percent of students scoring Level 3 or meets expectations, and again, the red line is the 2035 goal. Switching to mathematics, we're again looking at Level 2 or higher by grade level, and then Level 3 or higher by grade. Ladies and gentlemen, context is an important aspect of understanding data, and one way that we can add context or apply context to this data is to compare our results with other school districts. This chart shows Richland 2 compared to eight other school districts from neighboring counties and to the state. Once again, we're looking at the percent of students who scored Level 2 or higher on the SC Ready English Language Arts Test. Again, this is the English Language Arts Test, looking at the same eight districts and the state of South Carolina, but we're looking at Level 3 or higher. I'm going to continue to move through these, through these, please stop me if you have any questions. Moving to mathematics, beginning with Level 2, where again, the 2035 goal is 90%. Let's see, Richland 2 compared to the other Midlands districts and the state. Although the South Carolina Succeeds Plan does not provide specific achievement goals for Science and Social Studies, as it does with ELA and Math with a 90% and a 70%, it does still require that these subjects be included in the report card calculations. This table shows the names of the performance levels for these tests. Please note that Science and Social Studies uses the same four performance levels as SC Ready, but Social Studies is reported using three levels, not met, met, and exemplary. For accountability purposes and for the calculation of report cards, the points are assigned on a five-point basis, not met 1, not met 2, met, exemplary 4, and exemplary 5. We'll now quickly review the results for our students on the SC Pass test, beginning with the students who scored Level 2 or higher on Science. And please remember that students in grades 5 and 7 don't take the Science test. That's why those numbers are at zero. And again, looking at Science, Level 3 or higher by grade level. With Social Studies, please remember that only grades 5 and 7 take the Social Studies test, and that the South Carolina Department of Education report cards shows the percent of students scoring met or exemplary, which is Level 3 or higher. Again, on that report card, for reporting purposes, there are only three levels, but for accountability purposes, there are in fact five. Once again, context, we can see Richland 2's performance, we're beginning with Science, the percent of students scoring Level 2 or higher by district, looking at the same districts, and again, comparing to the state of South Carolina. Again, Science, this is students performing at Level 3 or higher. And for Social Studies, we've got Level 2 or higher. When I presented the state assessment results in September, of course, the end-of-course exams results were still embargoed, so we couldn't discuss them. They've since been released. Once again, I'd like to review them in the framework of the South Carolina Succeeds Plan. So, I'd like for you to just notice that on the end-of-course exams, Level 2 is equivalent to a D, and Level 3 is a C. This chart shows the percent of students scoring Level 2 or higher in each of the four subjects. Please note that the 2035 goal represented by that line only applies to English 1 and to Algebra 1, so it doesn't extend all the way across. Again, looking at the four subjects, this is the percent of students scoring Level 3 or higher, which again, is a C by subject area. Again, reviewing the same eight districts in our neighboring counties and the state of South Carolina, we can see how Richland 2 compares on the Algebra 1 exam for the percent of students scoring Level 2 or higher. And Level 3 or higher. Again, please stop me if you have any questions. English 1, Level 2 or higher. English 1, Level 3 or higher. Biology 1, we'll begin with Level 2 or higher. Level 3 or higher. And finally, for the end-of-course exams, we have Social Studies, again, looking at the percent of students scoring Level 2 or higher. And the percent scoring Level 3 or higher. I'd like to shift gears now and turn to the national assessments. You may recall that high schools are rated on the percent of students who graduate college and career ready. There are several ways that a student may demonstrate college or career readiness that are measured by assessments. A student may demonstrate college readiness by scoring a composite of 20 or higher on the ACT, 10, 20 or higher on the SAT, a 3 or higher on an advanced placement exam, or 4 or higher on an IB exam. And they may demonstrate career readiness by scoring at the silver level or higher on the Ready to Work Assessment. Unfortunately, the Department of Education has not released the results for these assessments in the same format that we have for the other tests. So, I'm not going to be able to share with you the performance in the same way, but what I can share with you is the composite scores for our graduating seniors and how we compare to the state and to the nation. And we're beginning with ACT and looking at the last three years. Also, have the graduating seniors' results on the SAT. Please remember, we've only got two years, but remember that in 2016, the SAT Corporation reformatted the test, so we now have the evidence-based reading and writing and math as the two subject areas. So, we only have two years, and we're looking at both subject areas. Next, we have Advanced Placement, and this shows the percent of students scoring 3 or higher, again, by the district, the state, and the nation for the last three years. And the last college and career ready, last college and career rate assessment is the Ready to Work test, and this shows the percent of students scoring the silver level or higher for Richland 2 and the state of South Carolina.
Excuse me, Dr. Arnold.
Yes, sir.
Could you go back to the SAT?
2016, 2017 graduating seniors.
Well, it's titled 16, 17 at the top, but it is 17, 18.
My apology.
No, no, it's fine, but I just want to-
It is in fact 17, 18. I didn't catch that.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it looks like the color scheme is different than the other ones. It looks like dark blue is nation when all the other ones had that as Richland 2, and then the green was state, but this is saying Richland 2. Is that accurate, or are the, should the color scheme still be the same and that's just a misprint?
The color scheme should have been the same, but I'll verify it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, time to shift gears again. We're going to leave the assessments and talk a little bit about the state report card. As you may have heard, the Education Oversight Committee and the Department of Education did in fact release a new set of report cards on November 29th. This image is for the district. Again, districts don't receive ratings, however, the structure of the report cards is pretty much the same. The main section of the page identifies the areas that the schools were rated on, but it also includes some areas that were not part of the calculations. The link to the nation's report card, which is in the middle of the page there, does not appear on the school-level reports, but the classroom environment, student safety, and financial data are all present on the student report cards, or the school report cards, and they do provide information if you click on those links, but those sections were not used in the calculation of the ratings. Personally, I feel like it would have been a good idea to have separated them on the page, but they didn't. So, each of those, again, is a link, each of those icons. So, if you click on the one for academic achievement, what you'll see reported is the performance of South Carolina students, or excuse me, Richland 2 students, on the SC Ready, ELA in Math, and the end-of-course English 1 and Algebra 1. Okay? Now, theirs will look different. They used horizontal bars with different colors, I couldn't make them fit on the page. But the numbers are the same. I've taken the numbers from the State Department of Education. Now, as you're going back through the presentation, at some point, if you notice that there's a variation in the percent of students scoring Level 3 on this slide compared to the ones that we looked at previously, I want to explain why. This slide is presenting the results from the accountability assessments and includes only those students who were enrolled by the 45th day of instruction and continuously enrolled through the first day of testing. The other numbers that I shared with you are the same numbers reported by the State Department of Education on their website in the section related to assessments, and includes all students, not just those who were enrolled by the 45th day. So, there are two separate groups of students that we look at for different purposes here. The report card looks at only those students enrolled by the 45th day, continuously enrolled through the first day of testing. Preparing for Success, again, is Science and Social Studies, so we're here, we will see the SC Pass Science, SC Pass Social Studies, Biology 1, U.S. History and Constitution. And here, we're looking at, again, the percent of students scoring Level 3 or higher. I would note that for the SC Pass Social Studies, it's Level 2 or higher. I would note that for the SC past social studies, it's level 2 or higher. The federal accountability legislation requires that we monitor all of our subgroups, but one that we have to report on is our EL students, our English language learner students. Their performance is reported on the Access for Ls test, and what we're seeing when you click on the English language progress icon is the percent of students who met their progress towards their proficiency target. Their proficiency target is based on their initial performance on English when they first enrolled in our schools, and then how long they've been receiving services. So over time, they're expected to follow a path of progression. This reports the percent of students who are staying on that path. Next, we have the graduation rate. This is a four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate, and again, you can see Richland 2 compared to the state of South Carolina. I would remind you that this year, unlike in previous years, students who transferred to adult ed did not come off of the high school's accounting, they were maintained on the school's accounting. So we did see, across the state, a decline in the graduation rate. Clicking on the college and career readiness icon will show you the percent of students who scored based on their assessments and their work in school, that they have demonstrated they are either college-ready, career-ready, or both. I did catch this one, Mr. Shad, I got this one for you. That, that first column should be college or career-ready. Remember, students don't have to be both, one or the other. I caught it, but not in time to get it changed. And in case you're curious, the percent that is college and career-ready in Richland 2 is 38%, for the state, it's 38.9%. The last section, the last section we'll discuss this evening is labeled "school quality." I believe it's important that you're aware of this section that's labeled "school quality", and understand what is reported here. It reports a lot of additional information lower down on the table on the page, but the only value that is used to determine the points that are awarded, and therefore the school's rating, is the percent of students who scored in the committed range on the Student Engagement Survey. So these points are based on one number. This is based on a survey that was admitted to students last year in grades 3 through 12. I feel I should also share that there were errors discovered when the corporation responsible for the survey, Advanced Ed, first provided the data to the State Department of Education. As a result of those errors, the State Department of Education itself recalculated the values, and that was also the delay, the reason for the delay, November 15th was supposed to have been the release date, and it was delayed till November 29th. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I would be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Mrs. Agastya.
Thank you. I want to go back to just what you presented, the, what is committed?
I'm glad you asked. The Student Engagement Survey is very different than the surveys that have been used in the past and, and have continued to be administered. The one that we're most familiar with is the School Climate Survey. And the School Climate Survey is administered to students at the highest grade level for each span, so 5th grade, 8th grade, exception, in, in the 11th grade at, at the high schools. It's also administered to parents in those grade levels, and it's also administered to teachers. And the School Climate Survey asks about the students, the parents, and the teachers' feelings about the climate of the school itself. It asks about, and again, I apologize, this is the one that always comes to mind, are the restrooms clean? Have you been bullied at school? Are you satisfied with the communication between the school and the family? That type of thing. The Student Engagement Survey doesn't ask the student about the climate of the school, but asks them questions about how they perceive themselves as learners, and how committed they are, or how engaged they are in their learning. So it's a very, very different animal. This is very intrinsic, it's intrinsic factors about a student and their learning. And I would like to share with you, again, just for the sake of transparency, just a few of the items, so that you have an understanding of the structure of this. The survey was administered to all of our students, again, 3 through 8. It includes 18 items that are used to determine their level of commitment, and I'd like to just share a few. The first one begins with a statement. When I'm in class, the student is expected to select one of these five responses. I want to talk about what I'm learning. I do enough to make a good grade. I get so busy with my work and forget what time it is. I have a hard time doing the work. I do not do, try to do my best. This is the elementary version, there's a middle school and high school version. Second, when if the classwork is hard to do, I try a little more, do my very best, get a little nervous, put my head down on my desk, or need to think better. Now, according to Advanced Ed, the responses that the students select, and there's no right or wrong answer, but the responses that the students select would indicate their level of engagement or commitment to learning. And that's how this, this survey is structured. Other questions?
I got a comment. That's about clear as mud as to where we are, through all of that, and I mean, we don't have comparative data because it's new, and I knew there's a, still a lot of issues. EOC, State Department of Education, do not agree on the standards that are used in the report card just in general. I know there's still a lot of tension there.
There is.
Um, you know, our teachers and administrators, y'all just keep working hard, just keep doing what you need to do to make sure that our students have the best day that they can, understand that, um, you know, we, we know everybody's pulling in the same direction. Dr. Davis, I know, has done a lot to, um, put measures in place, and Nancy, I know your team's working hard. I mean, we, we have your backs, and, and, I mean, there's a lot of work here, but all that, I don't know what I get out of all of that, um, and, and what it means. So, I appreciate you putting it up there and all the work it took to do that, um, but...
Unfortunately, when it comes to the report card, I think there are a lot of people who don't really understand what all that is, and I would have to count myself among them in some aspects.
Yeah, and you're a lot smarter at this than me, so if you're, if that's where you are, then I feel a little more validated for being lost in all that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Thank you for that detailed report, really appreciate that, and I know that our faculty and staff and teachers and administrators are working hard, but it still gives us a snapshot of where we are and where we need to be. And I think we've been talking about this for a few years, middle school. Nancy, maybe you or Dr. Davis can tell us, because I'm very concerned about the test scores in our middle school, and I think I've expressed this for quite some time, and I know we've made progress in some areas, but we're still struggling. If you could tell me, what are some procedures and tutorials that we have in place with our middle schools?
And I would be happy to defer to Nancy.
And what Libby is giving you is a handout we prepared in response to report card ratings, and it does address some of what we're doing at middle school. But we do want to point out focus areas that we have owned, this handout that we're giving you, on deepening understanding of teaching to the intent of the standards, and in the handout, you have some examples, and also assessing to the intent of the standards, providing job-embedded PD with modeling and coaching on effective teaching strategies based on district and school data, and also our continued work on building a data literate culture for teachers and school leaders to use data effectively to inform instructional decisions that impact student learning. And then again, when we're talking, you're talking about middle school, but we have there for elementary school, providing early interventions in literacy. And we have some things listed, if you'll go to the section under middle school, and I'm going to ask Ms. Atkinson to help with those specifics. But again, to deepening the understanding of teaching and learning the standards, or teaching and assessing to the intent of the standards, all of our middle schools this year are part of our formative assessment and benchmark group, and when we talk about benchmarks, it is not about a test, it is about using data to inform instruction, and it is about a formative assessment system where teachers have the ability to create short formative assessments, where they pick the DOK level, standards and indicators, and the types of questions. And we have been having rich conversations with those middle school teachers, using the data to inform instruction. In fact, Ms. Atkinson had one of those at Kelly Mill Middle School today, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
If I can interject for one second, I understand a lot of what you're saying, but can you give us some examples, like are we incorporating a science lab now in middle schools? Are we extending their reading comprehension, so we can understand? You know, not everyone is an educator, so if you could break it down to us, what are we doing in middle schools?
Right, that's what she's going to-
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you'll flip back a couple of pages where we actually have Kelly Mill Middle and Summit Parkway, that has a list of what we've done specifically at those two schools, but we've also done those at all schools, specifically working on best practices, working with our ELA content specialist on reading comprehension, what shared reading looks like, we were reading on grade level, also working with small groups, with those students that are behind, teaching middle school teachers what that looks like, working with small groups. We started off the year with the session specifically on that in August, and we have continued to broaden that. We have a number of principals who have used their school funds to buy level text. So if we have a 7th grader reading on a 4th grade level, there are some texts there that when they pull a small group, that child is reading on their instructional level and scaffolding to grade level. We are certainly using hands-on science, our content specialist in science has been working with each of the seven middle schools, going out and doing model lessons specifically on those science standards that we did not score well in by school and as a district. And you also see there on that list where we have some very specific curriculum, focused math, and leveled literacy that our interventionists are working with too, with our students that are specifically behind in middle school.
Just another question, and I think Dr. Arnold could probably answer this. Have you looked at the test scores for maybe the students who are in magnet programs compared to the students who are in just general classes, and looked at the scores? I would love to see the difference in the scores there.
We'd be happy to provide that for you. Part of the analysis that we do typically internally is look at our various magnet programs and the performance of those students and compare them. I'm not sure if those have been run for this year, but we certainly can provide that for you.
If you can get us a copy of that. Also, can you speak as far as middle school level, what do we do before school or after school or during lunch? Because I know middle school students do not have a lunch break, and I know, we'll talk more about that later. I think we had a conversation about allowing them that free time to interact and build those social skills. But what do we provide early morning or after school or during lunchtime for tutorials for middle school?
Very good question. If you go by any of our middle school classrooms, you will normally see a schedule posted before school tutoring times, times at lunch, or times after school. Each principal does have their teachers available at one of those three areas, and a lot of them are available at two of those three. So those are posted in classrooms, and teachers are, parents are also notified of those tutoring sessions as well.
And what's the percentage of our parents, students, that attend those before and after school tutorials?
That varies school to school, but I can certainly get you some numbers on that.
If we can get some numbers on that, I'll appreciate it.
Sure, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Dr. Davis?
In addition to that, I've recently had a conversation with Dr. Arlene Barcudas, actually today, in response to that, in looking at our 21st Century Learning Grants that we have at various elementary and middle schools, to come up with a more standard of focus for the 50% of time that's supposed to be in instruction. In addition to that, as we're looking at additional 21st Century Grants, being able to incorporate Saturday School opportunities into those grants for those middle school students as well, and so that those students will have an ability to come to school on Saturday. Of course, with successful grant implementation, we'll be able to bus those students to their middle schools. In addition to that, at their after-school 21st Century Grant Centers, they would have some structured things that are, that we're doing as a district. So we're, we just started some conversations around that to make sure that that's something that's can be standardized and measured. As you know, in the past, we've had some freedom and flexibility to kind of do things at each individual school site, as to each individual school site determine that's what they want to do. And there's some, some need to have some standardization, or at least common practices, best practices that are across the system if you plan to move the entire system, and not see movement at one school versus another.
Right. Ms. Atkinson also has listed there about math, working, we know that 6th grade math is a weakness, and so really working on that vertical articulation in middle school and the conceptual understanding. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Holmes?
Um, yes, I know that these scores are all-inclusive, correct? But I did notice some other scores the other night about the different demographic groups within the scores. There is still a huge disparage between certain demographic groups. My question is, is what are we doing to address those huge gaps that I see in that particular set of data?
One thing that we are doing is Avid Strategies in all of our middle schools, and when I was at Kelly Mill Middle School today, and Dr. Davis just came back and also brought it up, because he's recently been at an Avid meeting, where the mission, if you go on the Avid website, the mission of Avid is to close the achievement gap and to make kids college-ready.
Because the gap is, is quite large when you look at it. I think there was some, in one particular gap, it was like 33% compared to 70%. That's a huge difference. I know Avid, Avid is a good program, but I think, is there any other indications of any other means such as cultural competency or anything of that nature to close those particular gaps?
Avid actually has a cultural competency strand, and we have people in the district that are trained with that, and also have brought in consultants from Avid, and will continue to do so.
Okay.
And we are looking at our literature and what we're offering with our literature, and that it is diverse, and looking at that across the board. In fact, we're meeting with media specialists on Thursday to actually talk more about that.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to that, Dr. Holmes, as I looked at the disparity of performance among subgroups within our district, I think it's important for us to remember, or concentrate on, at least this is, and this is for our faculty and staff and for our parents that are viewing, and, and, and our administrators, it's important for us to, to also look at the percent and disparity as it relates to poverty within our school district as well, and not necessarily get caught in the trap of the paradigm that it's, it's about being African-American, or being black, or white, or Hispanic. As I did some, some recent research on our disparities or our numbers of students that are in poverty, there are some startling differences in the performance of our students who are in poverty versus our students that are not, who live in poverty. We have 15,000, roughly 15,000 students in this district identified as living in poverty or identified as students of poverty. Of those 15,000 students, 11,000 of those students identify as being African-American. And so when you look at the percentage of students who identify themselves as being impoverished, or have been identified as being impoverished, roughly 70% of all the students who are identified as being in poverty is African-American. And so, in addressing those culturally relevant or culturally relevant pedagogy strategies that Avid and others, others have identified, there are so many, some key things that we are have, we're going to have to retrain our staff and our administrative administration on. One of the first steps in culturally relevant pedagogy is ensuring that, is identifying how the individual sees themselves as a teacher, and sees themselves as an instructor in relations to the environment that they teach in. And that's number one. Number two is also looking at the way they see relationships. So how do they see relationships and the relationships that they have with their students as it relates to the environment that they're teaching, or the environment that they're in? And then the third is how do they view knowledge? How do they see themselves as a person who facilitates the learning process and, and the knowledge relevant to the, the environment that they are teaching or conducting in? Some recent research that we shared recently in our district is that, even though there's been a lot of research about- been a lot of research about the most, the biggest impact on student achievement is the teacher, there's actually research that suggests that the biggest impact on student achievement is, is teacher efficacy, collective teacher efficacy. So it's not just that they are good teachers, but do you believe you are the teacher to make the difference in that child's life? So that, that has a bigger impact on whether or not the teacher is a high-quality teacher versus the teacher's belief in themselves as a teacher. The second one is the student's efficacy. Do I believe the teacher that I have or the administrator that I have is, believes in me? And that's where the cultural competency and the culturally relevant pedagogy comes into place, is all centers around the belief and the relationships that take place in those schools. Without that, you'll still have, you'll still have the disparities that exist because the, the stronger teachers will teach the more advanced academic students. And so that's the, that's a practice that we have to look at, and that's why we need to go to a collective strategy, on a uniform strategy, and whether that's Avid in addition to, and focusing on the culturally relevant pedagogy strands that Avid offer in addition to other things that we need to put in place. But training is going to be critical in getting that done over the next few years.
I just want to thank you, Dr. Davis, for that comment because that's exactly where I was going to go with that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, and I know we're talking about middle school, but you'll notice in some of the materials we've given you, we talk about early interventions, and we know that that's critical and in our high-poverty schools, making sure that we're providing experiences for all students and have high expectations for all students.
Mr. Manning?
I just wanted to comment, we look at all those things that Dr. Davis just talked about, this on the teacher and administrator, you come out of college making $32,000 a year. And then you get in this pressure cooker with the parents and the, all the other things. I mean, that's just a lot on our educators that they have to do to make sure. And, and I really appreciate, I know there's tons out there that absolutely love it, but it's why we lose so many in the first five years, because people get in there and realize how much they have to do in order to be effective. They don't feel like they're effective when they come in because there's just a lot, and then we lose them, and they go into other professions when we do get them. So I just want to recognize that for what it is and, and again, appreciate the work, Dr. Davis, that we're doing, but also our educators having to take all that on. And that didn't even get into ACES and how they identify with the, with the issues that the students bring to them every day and all those other things. That was just one small snapshot of what's on our educators.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Any other questions?
Let's have a couple, oh, Mr. Shad.
Oh, I'm sorry, who'd you call first?
I'll go first, go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Gregory, this is the response to the school report card rating. And I don't, you know, I'm literal. That, this doesn't mean these are things that you are doing because we now have these rates. These are things that we've already been addressing.
We have been addressing as the achievement data, student learning data came in and moving forward, yeah.
And I know discipline is not part of the, well, it is part of teaching and learning, but it's not, it's just instructional.
This is just from an instructional standpoint.
But in your years of experience and being in this game, obviously, discipline plays a role in that, and the goal is to try to keep as many students in the classroom and of course, make sure the other students are safe and everything. But them being out for infractions obviously negatively impacts their learning, right? Now, in a perfect world, wouldn't you want to have as many reading coaches and intervention and math coaches and that sort of thing, right?
Sure.
You would want to have every child which has a mentor that can check on them and be a part of their lives to assist parents in taking care of the whole child. You would want that, wouldn't you?
Sure.
You would want your teachers to feel supported not only financially, because we know they don't get into it for the money, they don't stay in it for the money, but for them to have to dig in their pocket to take care of their students and we are allowed to give them a 1% raise, which obviously goes out the window because they're paying for their classroom, but we'd love to take care of them financially. We'd love to give them the mentoring by another teacher who, oh, by the way, has to still take care of their, their workload. We would love that, wouldn't we?
Sure.
Now, for this chart, this, this, this group that you gave us, are these all the folks, all the schools who are considered below average and unsatisfactory? Is this everyone?
Below average and unsatisfactory, right.
Okay. So I'm seeing two out of our, what, eight middle schools?
Correct.
And, how, what, how many elementary?
Two.
Two?
Three.
Three?
Well, two.
Well, in the, right, in the center. Okay. That's out of all of our schools in District Two.
Yes, sir.
All right. Somewhat, I feel somewhat good about that, somewhat. We shouldn't have any, but we are addressing those. And I think I need to pull Dr. Arnold back up, if you don't mind. And thank you all ladies.
Thank you.
Now, Dr. Arnold, we've had the conversation last week.
Yes, sir.
About school quality, and I'm just going to piggyback on what Ms. Agostini asked. When we're talking about the committed student, there could be what we call a high flyer who just gets it, takes care of the test and everything, but because of who they are and how they might respond on this survey that, what they were provided, they might not be considered a committed student, correct?
Yes, sir.
On the flip side, we may have a student who, and I'm, I'm not going to ask, but you know I do it every year, the difference between being proficient and growth, but we may have a student who is on the track to grow, is not a high flyer, but is showing growth. The teacher is working with them and, and things are going well, they're in an upward trajectory, but hadn't quite gotten to the, the three, maybe into two, and I would say is very committed to their economics, their, uh, economic, educational success, but, and may show themselves as being committed. Tell the folks how much of a percentage this school quality, which is only one factor, like you stated, how much is that a percentage of the overall report card?
For elementary and middle schools, again, that one number is 10% of the total number of points that a school can earn.
That one number covers 10% of the overall grade?
Yes, sir. At the high schools, it is reduced to five, but for elementary and middle school, which is most of our, our schools, it is 10%.
Okay. And you looked at the survey, obviously, you gave us a little bit of it.
Yes, sir.
And, and you know the question I asked earlier last week? You have your PhD?
Yes, sir.
And you looked at these questions, and even you admitted, what was the word you used? Was it convoluted?
That if I didn't use that one, it would be appropriate now.
Okay. All right. So...
I, I have reviewed these questions and tried to, again, based on my experience, my reading, my research, what I've done in the past, tried to determine which of these specific answers would be classified as, as showing a higher level of commitment. And I'm not sure in all instances that I can do that.
Okay. And this is not on a teacher's 100-point scale in terms of grading, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. However, we shouldn't necessarily be overjoyed by this report card overall for District Two. And I'm just speaking editorially, and I have a question for our superintendent. And I know the district has put out a statement and given a response to it, but I need to hear from my superintendent, what is your overall personal assessment of where we are as a district based in relation to this school report card?
I, I think in relation to the school report card, where we are as an overall district is that we're in a process, we're in a status where we have to continuously stay focused on improving. I think we have phenomenal teachers in our district who work extremely hard. What we need to do is focus that hard work and all that energy and effort into the right places and to ensure that they're getting the best. One, where we ask for high support, high expectations, we're making sure as administration, we're giving them high support, having continuous conversations with them what that looks like. But there are some areas that we have to continue to shore up and shorten up and that we've been working on. One of those areas was, was making sure that our teachers and our administrators too, I don't want to put this all on teachers, teachers, our administrators as well, that we understand what the intent of the indicator is. That's something we just started doing last year. We had to do a similar, pretty much a whole session on, this is the standard, this is the indicator of learning, what is the intent of this indicator? To ensure that across the system, that a fourth grade teacher at CFI or CFK and a fourth grade teacher at Bookman or at Conder both understand what the intent of that indicator suggests or states, that it is consistent across the system so that every student in the district is getting a high-quality premier academic experience. That's one of the things that we had to do. One of the ways for us to ensure this, and it's not something, and, and, and I'll be completely transparent since we're here, it's not something that is celebrated and everyone's standing on their hands clapping for, but one of the ways to be able to do that is to make sure that we have assessments that we can all look at to us to make determinations on what's the next steps we need to take. It's difficult to ask a first-year teacher to come in, to learn how to teach, and to be able to write their very own assessment. It takes people and experts, people go to school for years and years and get PhDs in being able to write an, a high-quality assessment. So we have to make sure that we have an opportunity for those teachers to come in to be able to do that. We're seeing 200 teachers, could easily see 200 to 300 teachers per year, not just in our schools, in our district, but in other districts. To assume that everyone that's coming in to take the risk that they have the ability to write a high-quality assessment, to take the risk that they fully understand the intent of the indicator, is, I think, a mistake. And so we have to make sure that we have systematic things in place that allow us to do that and allow us to look at the data across the system simultaneously, make adjustments where needed, implement and deploy the resources to those individual schools and to those individual teachers to do that. The question that will be asked was, do we know if it worked? Well, preliminarily, right now, it appears to be working. After implementing benchmarks in TE21 and implementing Data Era 5 and having a data protocol, how we look at data and utilizing those pilot schools that we put into place two years ago, we are seeing at the elementary levels where for the first time in the last three years, we've outperformed the state in our elementary assessment. So if you go back and look at where we were three years ago as an elementary division compared to the state, we were below the state as an elementary. When you look at us as a system at elementary schools now, with only implementing that at a handful of elementary schools, but including all principals in the professional learning opportunities, we've seen a substantial increase. In some schools, we've seen an increase of 20 to 21 points in particular grade levels. That's also been replicated at some of the middle schools who have also utilized that. But in the end, it's going to come down to the belief of, one, the superintendent, that he's the person to ensure that every student get a high-quality premier education, every person in the cabinet, every principal, every, every teacher, every parent, and every student. Collective efficacy is what we need and what we need to continue to work on, and we have to be able to have a clear vision of what that looks like to be a successful school system. You cannot operate as 41 individual schools. You can't ensure that every student, 28,500-plus students are getting a high-quality education, premier education, if every school gets to operate as a singular unit. It's impossible to move the system forward and move, and ensure that our students are getting the very best opportunities, and that's something that we have to continue to work on.
And just thank you for that. One group that I think you failed to mention, but I know you are totally in agreement, you know, we have certain organizations and groups who want to criticize, who want to question, who want to pick out data for whatever agenda they may have. I'm sure the district has their arms open and have various ways that these individuals in these organizations can come inside our school walls and literally help these kids. So I'm sending a call of action to those folks and those individuals, if you truly care about this district, spend a day with us. Come to a school event, mentor. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. I had a couple of questions, and I believe Dr., between you and Dr. Davis, you've checked them all off. One, one thing I want to say is that I appreciate everyone's patience tonight with us. We only have one board meeting this month, so we've got a lot packed into this meeting, but all of this data, I know there's been some heavy lifting tonight, a lot of data here. It's all available on the website, so if you can't take notes as to all of that data, it's all available on the website. We appreciate your hard work and a team of people that go into presenting this information. One of the, I had questions about testing bias and things of that nature, but I think all of those questions have been answered. One of the things I want to ask, and I think Dr. Davis probably touched on that some, we understand the school report cards, and I know that for the most part, District Two, you know, competes at or above the state average, but you know, our goal is to be, you know, this premier period and not just compared to the state or to other districts. One of the things that, that concerns me is I want to, I understand how the report cards are comprised, I understand the biases and the things are there, but what recommendation do you have, either you or Dr. Davis, as to how we can explain this system to a parent who thinks that because it says unsatisfactory, they go to a bad school, that their kid, that their child's education is inadequate, and that because they've been labeled as unsatisfactory, that their education that they're getting is subpar? What recommendation do you have as to how we can assure our parents that we do have teachers that care about their students and are providing a quality education to them?
I expect Dr. Davis will have some thoughts on this, but I'd, I'd like to begin by sharing and echoing what our state superintendent of education said when these report cards were released at that press conference. This is one way of looking at a school. It, it's not appropriate to judge a school entirely based on this report card. Ms. Spearman encouraged parents, as we just heard, to come to the schools, visit the classrooms, talk to the teachers, talk to the principals, find out what's happening in your, in your local school. So I think it's important that we keep that in mind and that we always make that available and as a possibility to our parents. The other thing, I've been going to schools and whether it be faculty meetings, PTO meetings, SIC meetings, to sit down with parents that have the time, the opportunity, and the interest to come and find out more about our report card system. I, I do my very best to explain it in terms that, that parents can understand and without, without attacking, without offending, but just being as clear as possible. And I think to continue to do that, to continue to provide more information is, is an appropriate step.
Thank you, Dr. Arnold.
The parents have to look at, we all have to look at data and the, not look at data in the aggregate, and take a holistic approach to looking at the data. So you see the data, you say the school's unsatisfactory, or you say certain percentage of students are at this level. Look at where your student is and make sure that where your student is, if they're in a particular classroom, they're with a particular teacher, is that teacher growing your student? And not concentrate on the aggregate data, because there are so many factors that influence a piece of data in that, in that way. And every student is not going to be at the same level at the same time. I believe wholeheartedly in also visiting schools and, and speaking with administrators and visiting teachers and speaking with teachers and being actively engaged in the learning of the student. Being a part of the community that helps provide a high-quality premier education for all of our students, that's going to be, it, it will be very critical. Students who have highly engaged parents in their educational experience, it to have a, a good, healthy educational experience. They have less disciplinary issues, they're more involved in their school activities. Where you place your value, the student will have the same type of value, the same energy and effort as I shared before that we see at ballgames. I would love the same energy and effort that we see when we have academic nights, the same, the turnout that we have at, at Bojangles and Chick-fil-A. I would like to see the same turnout at academic nights, at chorus, at band, at all the events that our students put their energies and efforts to. Those are the types of things that we, we need and the things, the things that we ask our, our families for. We have phenomenal, phenomenal teachers in our district, because I've seen some of the hardest-working teachers in this, in the district when I travel and visit classrooms. And I don't just go in to do a show, I go in and I actually observe teaching and learning taking place in our schools. There are some areas that we need improvement in, not just in the classroom, but as a system and as a district, starting at the superintendent level. And then there's also areas that we do a phenomenal job, and we need to replicate those things to make sure that that exists. those things to make sure that that exists across the system so that everyone's getting an equitable educational experience or equal educational experience, I should say.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Any more questions or comments at this time? Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I'd like to turn it over now to Ms. Audrey Brady, who's going to provide you with more information about how we discuss data.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Davis. My name is Audrey Brady. I'm a data analyst here in Richland School District 2, and I appreciate you having me tonight. I am here to share with you a change on how we report on one of our subgroups. When we report data, not only do we report the overall population of students, but the subgroups as well. These include race and ethnicity, military-connected status, gender, students with individualized education plans, and free or reduced lunch status. Starting this year, the district will no longer be able to provide data based on free or reduced lunch status as an indicator of students living in homes with low socioeconomic status or poverty.
The microphone is on. If you could just pull it towards you just a little bit. You don't have a very loud voice. I kind of relate, but just pull it closer to you. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me know. So why are we changing? There are several federal and state policy shifts, and the past few years necessitates this change. Foremost, the Community Eligibility Provision, or CEP, was introduced in Richland 2. CEP is a federal non-pricing meal service option for schools and school districts in low-income areas. CEP schools serve all students' meals at no charge. Richland 2 now has four schools with this program in place. However, with the introduction of the program at these schools, meal applications are no longer collected. Without these applications, we can no longer use lunch status as an indicator of students living in homes with low socioeconomic status. Fortunately, the state now provides a pupil in poverty indicator at the student level. The district can now use this measure instead of lunch status to more accurately gauge the rate of students living in homes with low socioeconomic status and monitor these students' achievement. As of Day 45, Richland 2 has 55.2% of its students living in homes with low socioeconomic status. As consumers of information from the Department of Education, we would like you to be aware that the state interchangeably uses economically disadvantaged, students in poverty, and pupils in poverty to describe students living in homes with low socioeconomic status. The district reports will match the language of the state's reports whenever possible. Otherwise, communication from Richland 2 will use students living in homes with low socioeconomic There are several benefits to this change. First, the PEP indicator is a more accurate method of reporting students who are faced with socioeconomic challenges. Secondly, lunch status relied on self-reporting by parents, whereas now, PIP status is directly linked to state databases. Lastly, our methodology and associated terms will align with the state-reported student groups. As the year progresses, we will be migrating our current terminology to match the updated language. Our department will work closely with communications and strategic partnerships to update current and future media. We will also notify principals and pertinent staff. So I appreciate your time, and may I answer any questions?
Question, what does this mean? Thank you for the presentation. I'm sorry for taking the time to share this with us. What does this mean? I know that at the state level and national level, I know acronyms and identifying terms are changed regularly, not to mention tests. What does this mean with regard to our ability to identify students who needs services, who need help? How does this impact that? Does it make it easier? Is it more challenging? Is there no change? But how do we identify students who need help?
This should make it easier because we are directly linked with the state. There are several databases that they pull that data from now, and it goes directly into our power school system. So, and as we probably know, before relying on free and reduced lunch status, where that's the self-reported, and as students get into middle school and high school, some of those forms are a lot harder to get back. So it didn't actually truly represent the challenges that are faced in Richland 2. So we hope that this indicator will provide us with more accurate data, and not only that, it's going to provide us data that matches what the state has for us. So before, we were just guessing based on what students are telling us, and we never actually had that student data until this year that the state has.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or concerns from board members?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
Ms. Brady, do you know how many, what was our percentage last year based on the free and reduced lunch rate of, what was the percentage of students that were eligible? Of course, based on self-reporting.
I would like to say it was somewhere around 50 to 52%. So it has gone up a little bit to 55.2% this year.
Okay, I'm sorry. I wrote down 54%. Okay, so 55.2 are in the low socioeconomic status?
Yes, sir, as of Day 45.
And I understand self-reporting, but is that, is, do you know if the state's measure of what they now call pupil in poverty, if that's exactly the same as free and reduced? Is it based on the same poverty level or whatever it is, 115% of the federal poverty level?
No, sir, they're not based on the same indicators.
Okay.
Free and reduced lunch is based on SNAP, and it's based on TAMP. It's also based on self-reported income, as well as if a student is considered homeless, runaway, foster. Those are the reporting categories for free and reduced lunch. The difference between the two is there is no longer that reporting of the income. Medicaid is now a factor that's included in the system. So the same exact indicators for each, but now instead of that reporting of income is Medicaid.
All right, so I just want to make sure I understand the, there is a, it's a majority, but it's a small majority, but the majority of our students qualify, they are considered low socioeconomic status. Is that correct?
55.2% of our students, yes, sir.
Are in low socioeconomic. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions from board members? Not thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Moving right along. Next on our agenda is item 12.8, Report First Quarter Discipline Report. Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we'll have Mr. Cleveland Smith come before you this evening to provide you the first quarter disciplinary report for December 11, 2018. Mr. Smith?
Madam Chair, Dr. Davis, board members, it's my pleasure to be here to give you the discipline report for the first quarter. What I want to start with is looking at, I'm comparing last year's first quarter to this year's first quarter. The information is up there. I want to start with infractions. Our Level 1 infractions for the two years, you can see where Level 1s have gone down this year. The information there for Level 2 infractions and the information there for Level 3 infractions. One of the points I want to point out is that most of our infractions are Level 1s, as I stated before in another presentation, that Level 1 data is a lot of detentions and tardies and things like that. So I'm not going to go into all that this evening, but again, the majority are 88.82%, 82.8% of our infractions are Level 1 infractions, and those are the ones that don't even make it to the suspension level. Also, we have the number of actual in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, and expulsions during the same time. As you can see, our in-school suspension numbers from last year to this year did decrease. However, our out-of-school suspensions went up by 30, 37, and our expulsions also went from 3 last year to 6 this year. This graph here is showing the same information, but this information is showing it as in percentages. And as you can see, our numbers are, and this is based off of total enrollment numbers for each year. So that's where that data is from. In-school suspensions, I broke them out by levels here. I gave you the total for both years, and then you see at each level what they are. Our elementaries, the number of suspensions went down. Middle school pretty much stayed about the same, and there was a drop in our high school numbers. This chart here, graph, I should say, really is giving you the number of students that received in-school suspensions during that time. This is what we call our unduplicated data. So these are the actual students that received the suspensions. So if one student got a suspension, they're counted only one time there, and those are what the numbers are there. And again, you can see with high school, this past year, we trended down. We did the same thing with elementary, and again, middle school went up by 16 during the first quarter last year to this year. This is our out-of-school suspension numbers. They, these are the actual out-of-school suspension numbers. These are the duplicated data, so actual numbers of suspensions. We went up in elementary and we went up in high school, but on this one, out-of-school suspensions, middle school did go down this year. And this chart here shows you the unduplicated, the actual number of students that received those suspensions. One of the things I want to say about suspensions, as I looked at the data and I did a little deeper dive in it, I looked at one of our high schools, and one of our high schools had, with the number of suspensions for students, it was like 86. And when I looked at the total number of suspensions, it was 109. I also brought that out by ethnicity, and when you look at the ethnicity of that, the number of students at this high school, out of the 86 students that were actually suspended, 69 of them were black or African-Americans, which meant that 80% of the students who were suspended once, at least once, were African-American or black. When you look at the total number of suspensions at that school, it was 109. 88 of those students were black or African-American, and they accounted for 63% of the total number of suspensions. Again, when you look at the total enrollment for that school, and the number of percentage for the first 45 days for African-Americans or blacks, it equaled 51%. So I wanted to, I didn't have the graph for that one, but I wanted to share that with you also. Briefly, last time I was here, I was telling you, we were going to go ahead and look at revisiting discipline, and I want to give you a brief update of that. We had one meeting, and we had that meeting of our internal partners back on November 16. During that meeting, you know, we had that meeting to look at, come up with a philosophy of discipline for the district. We have another meeting scheduled for our community partners on this Friday. During that meeting, we also looked at, we had our behavior intervention specialists there, and they did an activity with us about what is discipline and who are our partners. And that, and they shared with the group a activity that was really eye-opening. You looked at what type of teachers that you might have had, and we had different teachers where you can go to different areas, supportive teachers, strict teachers, disciplinarians, and it was, it was, it was eye-opening to see how many people went to a certain type of a teacher that they remember as someone that was, that, you know, had an impact on them. And again, our behavior interventions are working with us to look at this data as we do a deeper dive with it. We have a, we're going to bring the whole group back together in January of this committee, and in there, as I say, we're going to look at developing the discipline philosophy. What is our philosophy on discipline? What does discipline looks like in Richland 2? What do we want to address as our philosophy? What are our best practices? Is it restorative practices? Is it the best model that we have? We're looking at all of that and having that conversation, going off of what Dr. Davis said earlier about bringing everybody to the table where everybody can have input and everybody can eat. That's what we are going to, that's what we're doing in the distance to see where we need to move as we move with discipline. Any questions?
Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm reading here your first meeting with community partners on December 14. Who are the community partners that will be involved, and how are they selected?
I had some names given to me of some parents, reached out to ask, get input from people to get some parents, some of our community organizations. Also have some clergy that were, that are in the area that were invited, so we're reaching out to those. Also, I know, we also are reaching out to, we involve law enforcement as well as public defenders and people like that. Want to put everybody we can to the table.
Thank you. Also, I appreciated the, your aside when you were speaking about one specific high school and taking the numbers from there. Is that possible for us to get a graph or a spreadsheet of what you just said for each high school and for each middle school?
As we work on, as I come to you with the reports and all, I will go ahead and incorporate more of that. Yes, I will work on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Elkins-Johnson.
Well, actually, that was one of my questions about being able to get the data for all of the high schools, and I wanted to see if it could be separated out with in-school suspension and out-of-school. And I know your report indicated that we had a decrease in in-school, but we had an increase in out-of-school, so we need to work on that. And I wanted to know also with the Level 1 infractions, what have we implemented in our high schools so we can decrease that number? Because it's pretty high in Level 1 infractions, and we know that there's tardies and ID violations. So how can we work with our high school principals and administrators and teachers and students to make sure that number is decreased?
As we have been our behavior intervention specialists, and we have them here tonight, I have Dinah, Dana and Brent, and they have been working with our, at schools at all our levels, but I know you asked about high schools. They are working with administrations in our high schools to look at that data. They're meeting with the administration, they're meeting with school counselors, they're meeting with teachers, they're doing PD, and they are work, looking at the school, or working with the school, I should say, to analyze their data and do a deep dive about those Level 1 infractions. What are some different approaches that they could use with that? Some of what they do is, they also, with Level 1, there are a lot of other interventions you can use, and there are a lot of Level 1 interventions. So they are working with the schools in incorporating more of those interventions.
The other thing, I was looking at some of the best practices, and I know you have best, you have restorative practices. Are we still using time to teach? And also... And also, do we have a list of schools that's using the best restorative practices and time to teach and some of the other interventions that we have in place?
I can get that information to you, yes. I have a list of the schools that are using best now, as well as I have information about who has been trained with restorative practices and what schools are working with.
And also time to teach. Are we still incorporating that in some of our schools?
I need to check on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, one of the things that we would like to do as a result of the continual conversation about best practices when it comes to discipline is, as Mr. Smith stated, we would like to come up with a discipline philosophy for the district so that we are practicing the same thing at every school and not have forty or different discipline approaches or different discipline philosophies as it relates to our school district. And so we're looking to, whether from this input and this task force, to come up with a recommendation of what that's going to be. And so if we're going to do restorative practice and with a combination of this or that, that we develop a comprehensive guide to be able to do that so that any new principal that may come in in two years from now, three years from now, this is what we're doing when it comes to discipline in our schools, based off best practices, based off of research, is research sound. These are the supports that we have in place, and so we don't have five or six different programs going on at the different schools. When we looked, took a deep dive look into our research, I shared an article with Mr. Smith that he's sharing with the members of the discipline task force that was written, I think, early this year, October of 2018, from the American Education Research Association Journal called "The Discipline Dilemma." And it basically took an in-depth longitudinal look at all these different discipline models, whether it's my teacher project, time to teach, restorative justice, PBIS. And it essentially found that all of those models in isolation can reduce the number of suspensions. However, none of the models reduce the disparities between African-American students or students of color and non-students of colors. The disparities still remain regardless of what model you use, if you don't use them in conjunction with other things like culturally relevant pedagogy or things that develop the relationship between the teachers and the students. So those two things that we've already discussed earlier when it comes to achievement along with discipline, if we put them together and marry those things together, we should have a more comprehensive approach to not only closing the achievement gap through those strategies along with Avid, in addition to using those same types of strategies when we implement it in our discipline and philosophy and approach, which gives us a systematic way of looking at both things.
And my final question, I know we have the community partners, and you receive names from schools. I also want to make sure that we reach out to those blue collar parents as well, because I think sometimes we forget about them. We have the PTO parents and the SIC parents and the doctors and the lawyers and the pastors and the teacher kids and all of that. Let's make sure we reach out to those other parents, you know, cafeteria workers, custodians, the department store parents, because they matter too. So let's make sure we have them on some of these committees.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
Since we're on the community partners, you have a group, I guess you would call it a select group of folks that are... You're expecting to come. But these meetings are open to the public, correct? You're not going to just close the door out on anybody that wants to show up?
No, sir.
Do you all already have it publicized, date, time, location?
The meeting on the fourteenth that I just mentioned, it's going to be at Columbia Place Mall.
Okay, what time?
At our conference center at nine AM.
At nine AM this coming Friday, Columbia Place Mall.
Yes, sir.
And all are welcome. And all voices will be received.
All voices be received.
This coming Friday at nine o'clock, Columbia Place Mall, the location in Columbia Place Mall, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, what day is that on?
That's Friday, right?
Okay, because we, again, we have to be considerate. If we have people who are working, and if they miss work, they don't get paid, we need to make sure that we are considerate of the times that we have these meetings. You know, not all persons can just miss work to come to a nine o'clock school district discipline meeting. So we need to make sure that we're open to those parents that, you know, are paid hourly and not paid salary.
And what we have done, and at this meeting coming up, just like I did at the first meeting in November with the internal, I will ask the group, what is a good time for the meeting? And I will go ahead and try to... And make it, you know, the group will have some input on that.
Again, we're asking the group, but the group are the white collar workers mainly or the folks who have days and times where they could probably get off and use a personal day from work.
Okay.
So let's be a little open-minded with that, and let's ask everyone what would be a great time, which normally is after work hours, four-thirty, five, six o'clock, weekends even possible. So if we can, Dr. Davis, if we can also be considerate and have some options of different dates so we can be inclusive.
Yeah, I think we would have to make an approach to have a separate set of groups and have a morning meeting and afternoon meeting, because there are second and third shift parents as well. And then also, when you meet after school hours, when kids are now at home, you lose those parents who can't come, because now they don't have supervision for their students. So we would have to offer multiple sessions for those so that the parents can sign up for individual sessions that they... Or people who are interested can sign up for any individual session that they like.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shad.
Thank you. Back to me. How are you going to ensure that there's fidelity with the reporting of incidents and especially with best practices? We want to make sure that the numbers are accurate.
With the number of infractions?
Well, with the best and how it's being implemented, and I know you're going to give us a list of those where it's... I want to make sure that we're not just having it introduced, that it's fully implemented, and that we have some... The documentation is accurate.
When we... When our best team meet, we will... They will go ahead and share with me what the data is at those schools, and we will do a deep dive with what's going on in those schools as well as what's going on in our other schools.
Okay. And you said that you... I don't know if you decided to do this or not, but you picked out one school, and you don't have a slide, but you picked out one school in terms of looking and, I guess, comparing African-American students who have suspensions and those who are not. What prompted you to do that?
I did.
To pick in that particular school?
Well, we were... In our conversation, I met with Mr. Smith prior to his presentation, and as I was looking through the presentation, there was more information that I thought would be relevant for the board to have. We were running up against time with the earlier executive session, which I asked that we consider having, so I'll have to take responsibility for that. But as a result of that, I asked him to give with Ms. Brady just to get a quick synopsis. It's actually not as complete as I wanted it to be. What I wanted to present and what I want to do as we're doing these discipline, quarterly discipline updates for you, is to also give you a breakdown of level one, level two, and level three offenses, as Dr. Elkins Johnson was saying about in-school and out-of-school, so that we can get a better picture for ourselves as we're making decisions and we're getting inputs from our partners about some of the things we're implementing so we can make a better decisions... Make better decisions as it relates to our students. If we see that level three offenses, for example, many of our public doesn't necessarily recognize what a level three offense is. And so as you all are making these very difficult decisions when it comes to recommendations for expulsions and things of that nature, our public really doesn't realize that most of the things that you're making decisions on are level three types of offenses. And so those things are not subjective. Those things are pretty objective things. And so there are... Although we're not a zero-tolerant school district, there is a desire to make sure that we have a safe and secure environment. And so if students are suspended and recommended for expulsion for selling drugs, that's going to be a recommendation for expulsion. We all make a decisions, and we have processes in place to help our students stay in school, but that still comes before the board to make that decision. If it's, you know, larceny or if it's weapons and things like that, there's no discretion when it comes to those types of things. And so I wanted the board to get a clear picture of how that breaks down in category and then how it breaks down amongst ethnicity so that we are... We're better able to focus on where we see the biases and discretions and things like that that may be happening. And we'll probably can guess that we're going to see that in our level... Enforcing the school discipline in our level ones and level two offenses, and so that we can hone in on where those things are and be more appropriate. If it's in disrespect, then what are we going to do with disrespect? Because we see that we see more minority students or students of color being suspended for disrespect versus non-minority students or students being... More students being suspended for cutting class versus other students of not of color or whatever that may be or of poverty. Where are we seeing the disparity so we can make better decisions as an administration so that we can make the job of the board a little bit easier?
And I appreciate that. And while we are seeing, in my opinion, less and less recommendations for expulsions, to us, it seems like it's being handled more at that school. We do have the final say on those, and we do not just always, because we look at each case separately.
That's right.
You know, separately. And we don't always accept the recommendation... Well, the, yeah, the recommendation from the district for expulsion. Sometimes we send them to alternative schools, so they're still getting educated. And so that's in part why the expulsions are down some this first quarter. But here's my concern, is that the school that you selected, and I think I know why, just the racial makeup, it's about even, fifty-one percent, and, you know, and the rest are non-African-American. But then when we point out that eighty percent of the suspensions were done by African-American students at that particular school, I don't want the message to go out that just inherently African-American students are more disruptive. As Dr. Davis has pointed out, sometimes it's in who is perceiving that child and what they are doing at that time. And that may get them to a level one. If you have too many level ones, you know, then that, you know, that may get you in in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension. So I do agree with the district taking a hard look, a deep dive, and looking at how we're applying and doing the philosophy, how we're applying it. But, you know, I haven't seen yet, what deadline are y'all putting on this philosophy? Because I think we were here last year saying we were looking at discipline, and I know that can be a recurring thing, but I want to see some deadlines and some dates so we can see... So we can hold y'all accountable to it, frankly.
Absolutely. I think the last time we did the discipline task force was two years ago, and we did the presentations on it last year. And at the beginning of this school year, we began to revisit discipline again, because at the end of the year, we saw the numbers began to creep back up. And I attribute that to not having a vision about what we're going to do about discipline and taking just kind of these pop-shot approaches to addressing things and not addressing them across the system in the same way. And so we will have a deadline and have a philosophy, I would say, before the Easter, the spring break.
Just want to thank you for your report, and I echo my colleague's sentiments with regard to data consistencies and everything. All of that is important. I just want to make a plea to our community, though. We have so many community members who reach out to us, and they ask for data. And kind of echoing Mr. Shad's sentiment earlier, we need mentors, people who are also concerned. I know their parents send to us the very best they have. You have children in school, Mr. Manning mentioned ACES earlier, who have adverse childhood experiences, who are hungry, who are in poverty, who are suffering abuse or witnessing abuse and going through a whole lot of things. And so there are so many factors too with regard to... Not on our part, we're trying to work on our part. But for community members who are also holding, you know, us accountable, we'd love mentors. We'd love for people to come and visit our schools and take the time to read to a child or that community piece is so important. Oftentimes, when it gets to us, we've got a tough decision to make. We want kids to stay in school, but there's so much we need to from the community partnerships, from people to come and to mentor and to actually spend time in our schools with our students. And that's just... It's just very meaningful, just something to put out there in the atmosphere. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the item thirteen point one, agenda items for January eighth, two thousand eighteen. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, the January eighth, twenty eighteen future agenda items. We will be signing the School Board Association ethic principles. We'll have student appeals and adult air requests legislative update. We'll have a school focus from North Springs Elementary School. We'll do special recognitions. We'll also be looking for the approval of policy revisions to EBC, ECA, EBCE, ECAC. And we'll be proposing the following policy revisions to EA, EB, EBBA, and EGAD. Support services goals, environmental and safety programs, prevention of disease and infectious transmission, and copyright compliance. In addition, we'll be looking for and asking for the approval of the calendar for the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Are there any additional agenda items that any board members would like to see at the next board meeting or a future board meeting? Hearing none, we'll move on to item fourteen point one. It's our second opportunity for public participation, but no one has signed up to address the board this evening, so we are going to move right along. Item fifteen one, board and superintendent comments, and I think I'm starting on my left tonight.
Thank you, y'all. Have a good night.
Thank you, and happy holidays. Absolutely. Bless you all for being here. Good night.
Have a safe and happy holiday and Merry Christmas to some of you, and Happy Holidays to others.
Have a nice and safe holiday.
I have a friend of mine, she just says blah.
Happy holidays and have a very safe trip home tonight, because this was a long meeting.
It was. And thank you all for your patience. This was a long night, but of course, it's because we had one meeting. And she'll get mad, but I want to acknowledge my daughter here, who's a Richland two graduate. I'm sorry, she's mad about that. But if you just wave your hand, Faith, so glad to see you, and thank you for your patience, honey. Having no further... Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Davis, we'd love to hear from you. I'm so sorry. I apologize. I apologize. And he was so gracious about it. He just gently, you know, tapped me. I'm so sorry.
Unfortunately, I do have some information I need to quickly share, but the one thing that I was going to say, I'm going to leave for the next board meeting. Richland two is hosting a holiday career fair Tuesday, December the eighteenth, and Wednesday, December the nineteenth. The fair is from nine AM to two-thirty PM. Attendance must pre-register to reserve an interview slot. If you miss these opportunities, another teacher career fair will be Saturday, January the twenty-sixth, from eight AM to eleven-thirty AM. Both career fairs are taking place here at R2I2. More information is on the district website. Winter break is just around the corner, so if you are looking for something to do, there's a big holiday hoops event happening at Richland Northeast High School. The Chick-fil-A Classic Holiday Basketball Tournament runs from December twenty-sixth to December the twenty-ninth. Some of the best teams from across the country will be competing. And I wish everyone a safe and happy holiday and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. My apologies. Having no further business to conclude, meeting adjourned.